Welcome to the third day of public hearings on Bill ninety six organized by the QCGN. Bonjour et bienvenue à la troisième journée d'audience publique, c'est le projet de loi quatre-vingt-seize organisé par le QCGN. The offices of the Quebec Community Groups Network are situated on the traditional territory of the Ghanian Gaaga, a place which has long served as a site of meeting and exchange amongst many First Nations, including the Ghanian Gaaga of the Haudenosaunee Confederacy. Here on Wendat, Abenaki, and Ashanabek, we recognize and respect the Ghanian and Gaaga as the traditional custodians of the lands and waters on which we meet today. I would like to start by introducing my colleagues on the panel. Madame Joan Fraser is a former senator and former editor of Montreal Gazette. Madame Aleni Bakapanos was a member of parliament for more than fifteen years and is a tireless advocate for women's rights. Marcus Tabacznik, another member of our committee, is unable to join us today. And my name is Thomas Ledwell, I'm a former journalist and recently served as a senior manager at the Trudeau Foundation, currently working as a strategy consultant. It is my honour to be moderating today's hearing. I'm pleased to report that our initiative has proven to be very popular and that, as a result, we are adding another day to our hearings. We'll now be sitting today, tomorrow, as well as Friday. Le format de ces audiences est simple, chaque invité disposera une période d'environ quinze minutes pour faire ses commentaires et sa présentation. Cela sera suivi d'une période d'échange de dix à quinze minutes entre les témoins et notre panel. Les présentations peuvent être faites en anglais ou en français, tout comme les questions et avances qui suivent. I should point out that viewers are welcome to provide feedback in the chat and to suggest questions for the panelists to ask the presenters. We will do our very best to include your questions. Furthermore, the hearing is being videotaped and will be available online via the QCGN website. We ask that all briefs, comments, and questions be civil and constructive. We do recognize that this, there are some hot-button topics being discussed. This is intended to be a respectful dialogue designed to find a productive path forward, and I invite you all to remember that over the course of the discussion. Le but de ces audiences est de permettre ce que le gouvernement du Québec a étouffé, c'est-à-dire d'une discussion libre et ouverte sur les effets potentiels de le projet de loi quatre-vingt-seize. It should be noted that this panel will not be issuing a report or suggesting amendments to the bill at the end of the hearings. The QCGN will be noting all comments and they will decide how best to incorporate the input into their written brief and oral presentation before the National Assembly Committee hearings. Now, for our first brief, it is my great pleasure to introduce Robert Lucky. He's the dean of the McGill Law School and one of our country's outstanding legal minds. Despite his heavy workload, he's made himself available to provide advice on both Bill twenty-one and Bill ninety-six, for which we are indeed very grateful. The start of the academic year is a very busy time for a dean and we are delighted that he's joined us today. And it's my pleasure to introduce Professor Lucky, Robert.
Thank you very much, Tom. I'm really honoured to be able to share some thoughts with you for a few minutes this morning. Bill ninety-six, as everyone who's looked at it knows, is extremely long and extremely complex. It is certainly not reducible to a robust defence of the French language. It's part of a larger effort by the current government to modify the constitutional structure of the province. It merits sustained study and public debate. And it is unfair to characterize any who call for such study and debate as opposed to defending the French language in this province. And I wanted to indicate that there's a lot in this proposed law. And, and there's no, it's unjustifiable to suggest it needs to be kind of rushed and that it's inappropriate to want to slow down and understand better what's going on. In my moments with you this morning, I want to touch on three elements of the bill. The purported amendment to the Constitution Act eighteen sixty-seven, the language of the courts in this province, and the derogations from the charters of rights. So first, the purported amendment to the Constitution Act eighteen sixty-seven, or what some of us may think of as the British North America Act. Section one fifty-nine of Bill ninety-six would add the following right into the Constitution Act eighteen sixty-seven. Fundamental characteristics of Quebec, Quebecers form a nation. French shall be the only official language of Quebec. It's also the common language of the Quebec nation. There are ongoing debates about the constitutionality of this amendment, namely whether it is permissible by unilateral action by the National Assembly. My own view is that it is not, that the amendment potentially relates to the use of the French or English language within a province in the sense of section forty-three B of the amending formula in the Constitution Act nineteen eighty-two. On that reading, if the amendments are understood as potentially relating to the use of English or French within a province, then amendments to the Constitution of Quebec would require a proclamation issued by the Governor General under the Great Seal of Canada, authorized by resolutions of the Senate and House of Commons. It couldn't be done by the National Assembly alone. I think it's also worth debating which consultations with First Nations within the boundaries of the province of Quebec would be appropriate before consecrating the status of Quebecers as forming a nation in the foundational document of the Federation. So much more could be said about that amendment, but the people who reacted, you know, the day after Bill ninety-six came out and said, of course, it's fine, the province can do this unilaterally. I think that is simplistic and inaccurate. Turning to the language of the courts, the Constitution Act eighteen sixty-seven in its section one thirty-three provides that French or English may be used by any person or in any pleading or process in or from all or any of the courts of Quebec. Essentially, French and English are the languages of the courts in this province. And Bill ninety-six would alter the charter of the French languages following. It would require that a certified French translation be attached to any pleading drawn up in English emanating from a legal person. It's drawing a distinction between natural persons, individuals, humans, and illegal persons such as a corporation. And it adds that the legal person shall bear the translation costs. So it would essentially, while allowing the use of English in Quebec courts, required that any corporation, however big or small, would need to be translating all their proceedings at their own expense. And in my view, this requirement is unconstitutional, going against the, the, the content of section one thirty-three's guarantee. It would severely burden the court system. Practically speaking, the potential is, if we imagine corporate litigants in the Quebec Superior Court, each of them doing their work in English, their lawyers working in English, all their documents would need to be translated into French to comply with this. It really runs against the idea that English and French are both equally the language of the courts in this province. Bill ninety-six would also provide that a person appointed to the office of judge, now this is clearly focusing on judges of the Court of Quebec, since the province doesn't control the federally appointed judges. But a person appointed to the office of judge shall not be required to have knowledge or a specific level of knowledge of a language other than the official language, that is, of knowledge of a language other than French, unless the Minister of Justice and the Minister of the French Language consider that exercise of that office requires such knowledge and that all reasonable means have been taken to avoid imposing such a requirement. This provision as well, I think, over time will work against the equal status of English and French in the courts of this province, as enshrined in section one thirty-three of the Constitution Act eighteen sixty-seven. And the last point I'll touch on is the invocation of the notwithstanding clauses in the Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms and in Quebec's Charter of Human Rights and Freedoms. And so, as people will know, both rights instruments provide the possibility that the legislature can state that its law will operate notwithstanding or despite one or more of certain guarantees that they set out. But what we see here, a couple of things are worth drawing our attention to. In a similar fashion to what the Quebec legislature did in Bill twenty-one, here they are using the fullest possible derogation. So there's no sort of legal analysis coming out of Quebec City suggesting that one or two rights might bump up against this proposed law, such that using the notwithstanding clause regarding them might be necessary. The idea of derogating from all rights as an ensemble suggests that, I think it suggests a kind of hostility to fundamental rights more generally. I also want to underscore that the exception is not just from the Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedom, but they're also derogating from the Quebec Charter of Rights and Human Freedoms. And this is deeply troubling. We've known for decades that there are people in this province who have never really accepted the patriation of the Constitution in the early nineteen eighties and the Canadian Charter, for which Quebec wasn't really a signatory. But there had, I had understood until very recently that the Quebec government and the National Assembly were nonetheless proud of defending human rights through the form of the Quebec Charter, which was an enactment of the Quebec National Assembly, which had been modified a number of times over the years by unanimous consent in the legislature. It was a pioneer, it preceded the Canadian Charter. And now, with the sort of invocation of the notwithstanding clause in, in both instruments and in a broad, sort of vast preemptive way, I think we're essentially getting a signal that there's no place for human rights to get in the way of the majoritarian will of the elected members of the National Assembly. And so I think that's deeply, deeply troubling. When you invoke the notwithstanding clause for all possible rights, it kind of becomes impracticable to have a discussion about the law's potential impact on one right for particular right holders. It just becomes this sort of wall where they're saying, basically, there's no space for the courts and there's no space for fundamental liberties here. So beyond the, the particular question of whether parts of Bill ninety-six might themselves abut against guaranteed rights, I'm really troubled that we see here the government making, starting to lay down a habit that in its fundamental laws, it decides that human rights and freedoms are no longer its concern. So I'll stop there and be pleased to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Robert. I will open the floor first to see if Joan or Lenny would like to ask a question.
Yes, please.
Joan Fraser, please go ahead.
This is a modestly technical question, but I don't know the answer. The constitutional charter's notwithstanding clause lapses after five years, if it's not renewed. Is there a similar deadline not in the Quebec Charter?
No, it's, it's permanent. So the, the section thirty-three-three in the Canadian Charter provides that there's a five-year maximum, as the former senator's raising, and the legislature can renew the derogation for up to a further five years. But there's at least a kind of democratic check where it gets put back on the order paper, back in the public mind, that we have legislation which is operating despite rights. When you derogate from the Quebec Charter, it can be done indefinitely. Of course, a, a future legislature can choose to repeal that derogation, but it's potentially permanent. So that's also, I mean, they're, they're setting themselves, they're, they're creating a lot of daylight between themselves and human rights. And with the Quebec Charter, it's potentially permanent.
So is there any other jurisdiction in the Western world that approaches matters in this same way of just saying, we want to do this and we won't let the law stand in our way?
It's a very broad question, you know, but.
Hungary and Poland maybe, yeah, I'm sorry. Does anybody, does any case come to mind? Let me rephrase it that way.
And to be clear, you know, not every jurisdiction has an entrenched charter of rights or charter of rights the way we have. I mean, on the Ontario Legislature recently derogated from all Canadian Charter rights possible in its legislation in, in, in relation to election financing. So, I mean, you could say this is the start of a, of a deeply worrisome trend. But I don't think people drafting the Canadian Charter, the provincial premiers arguing for the notwithstanding clause had in mind, oh, what if there are some rights not in the Charter that we might want to protect in a way that might cause friction with Charter rights? Or what if we disagree with how the courts interpret a particular Charter right? And some examples come to mind, where a kind of closely divided Supreme Court split on how to interpret a particular right. But there's no engagement here with a particular interpretation of rights. There's no argument here that they're pursuing a policy, the benefits of which are superior to the costs in terms of a particular right. This is really saying, we do not care about minority rights and freedoms, I think.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
There's a question, there's a question in the chat. Do you want me to go there or?
Yes, indeed. I was just going to queue it up, the question being, what's?
I'm sorry, Lenny, we'll go next.
Sorry. It's okay. Thank you very much, Dean. Actually, the question in the chat was exactly the question I had. I thought perhaps you could elaborate a little bit on what rights exactly you feel that the Quebec government, just give a few examples. Obviously, you're not going to go through the whole legislation or all the notwithstanding clauses. But what specific rights do you feel there is hostility, which was your word that you used, hostility to being, being evident in terms of the way the Quebec government is approaching certain Charter rights?
I guess I want to, thank you very much for the question. And so it overlaps with the question in the chat about what specific Charter rights are violated. But I want to elaborate a little more what I mean by hostility as well. So I, I actually don't want to give, in a sort of nutshell account now orally, like a sort of exhaustive answer about all potential rights conflicts with the Bill ninety-six might have. So that's maybe a kind of weak answer. But I, I will say that it does not violate rights in as, if, to the extent that it violates rights, it's not as, in, in as an extreme sense as some people might have expected when, in the days leading up to its release, we kept hearing they're going to use a notwithstanding clause, they're going to use a notwithstanding clause. So there may be implications for freedom of expression. Someone's just saying in the chat, aren't certain rights immune to derogation? Yes, they are. So the rights to minority language schooling can't be derogated from, that's in section twenty-three of the Charter. What I want to elaborate on is the hostility, I don't actually mean hostility to a particular right. I don't mean that Bill ninety-six may limit freedom of expression and therefore the government is showing itself hostile to freedom of expression. What I mean is when they essentially say, we are sort of opting out of the protection of the Canadian Charter to the full extent possible. And we're basically opting out of the Quebec Charter, which used to be the pride and joy of the National Assembly in Quebec. The message is hostility towards rights as a whole. The message is hostility to the word, towards the idea that the litigation process in which citizens come into an open independent court and make an argument about the best understanding of rights and how it relates to a piece of law. Like, I think they're expressing hostility towards the idea that the independent judiciary could serve as a check on a majority in legislature and that those protected rights, which are, you know, we entrenched them because we know that minorities may not always be very well heard in the legislative process. I think the hostility is not towards an individual right, but towards that whole package.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lenny. Professor Lucky, there was, in the first sessions held last week, Michael Bergman, he invoked that the, well, he, in his belief, there will be a constitutional crisis that in five, in a few years' time, he did give it a time horizon, should the bill pass in, in its current form. What, what must happen now in order to fend off such a crisis, a constitutional crisis in the years ahead?
Okay, can you just say a little bit more about what he thought the nature of the crisis would be?
From memory, it was a matter of, I mean, but looking longer term and again, looking at the bill in its current form, that this, that this will ultimately move through the courts and notably land with the Supreme Court. I believe this is his ultimate kind of, well, that's the end path for it, if it, again, remains in its current form.
I, I mean, I wish I had an easy solution to share, Tom. I mean, I can signal already, there are things to feel very uncomfortable about is lots of, you know, the, the politicians in Ottawa seem not to be troubled by the idea of the province unilaterally amending the eighteen sixty-seven act, even on a matter that potentially affects language. Some people are saying, oh, the amendment's fine because it's just symbolic, it doesn't mean anything. Others think that the amendment is significant because it means something. Sooner or later, we're going to find out. And if it, you know, if it turns out not to mean something, there'll be some very disappointed and angry people. If it turns out to mean something, there could be disappointed and angry people. If it turns out to mean something and to be invalid, there will be disappointed and angry people. So it's, it's moving into a path without much consultation or discussion. I mean, other, other amendments, changes to religious, from religious schooling to linguistic schooling, that was a change to the eighteen sixty-seven act, followed a kind of long process where there was a sense, I think, that that change was ripe. This one, I feel, is coming up without much groundwork having been laid. And so I don't think that helps to assure deep roots and a steady foundation for something. So in terms of solution, I mean, I, we've seen the provincial government, when it has a priority item, it's very keen to push things through. So Bill twenty-one was, you know, adopted under, to the bylaw, after very short hearings with a sense that it had to be done before the summer break in twenty nineteen. This one, there will be hearings this fall, but probably not taking the time that things of this magnitude require. And so I, I really wish that there were more time for people to be looking at this and absorbing and discussing and trying to separate out what the, what the objectives are from the means that have been chosen, because I, I am deeply concerned about the chosen means.
I'm opening the floor to Joan and Lenny, if they have following, any further questions. I do have one more question for you regarding the, the notwithstanding clause.
I, I have, we got one more in the chat as well, is that?
Oh, thank you. I, I do have an eye there as well. I'll ask the notwithstanding clause question first, then to the chat and Joan, if you have anything further as well. The, the notwithstanding clause has been used multiple times over the past thirty-odd years. The other day, we were having a discussion about, say, the differences between how it has been used in the past regarding, say, Bill one seventy-eight in the late eighties. And, and today, I'm interested in your characterization of this particular usage in the case of Bill ninety-six and perhaps also Bill twenty-one versus how it has been used in the past and indeed the intention which you, which you did allude to earlier.
Well, in the early eighties, I mean, the Quebec legislature kicked off by using it to kind of apply to all its statutes in the statute book. That is, but it was not derogating from the Quebec Charter at the time, it was derogating from the Canadian Charter. So that was a clear message of concern and rejection of the Canadian Charter. Derogating simultaneously from the Quebec Charter and the Canadian Charter is sending a very different message. And doing so in the blanket fashion, I mean, I really, I mean, I, we, the question in the chat says, wouldn't this use of the notwithstanding clause be more significant if Bill twenty-one did violate a bunch of fundamental Charter rights? I actually think it's more significant to be using it when it's unnecessary or not to take the trouble to decide whether it's necessary or not, but to say, we as a matter of course, in legislation we view as important, prefer simply to say, we don't turn our minds to whether it violates rights and freedoms and we don't want to be required to turn our minds. I think that's a very damaging message. And it might be, I would have different things to say perhaps if there were six flagrant rights violations that were being protected. But I think the, the, the sort of deployment of the derogations, again, in not just the Canadian Charter, but the Quebec legislature's own rights instrument to which it has long been committed, without showing why that's necessary to pursue a particular objective, I think sends a very, very negative message about rights.
Lenny.
Because that question keeps coming up specifically in the chat, so I'll go back to, perhaps we could talk about one example in the Charter, in the Quebec Charter. For example, the right to due process. Okay, when it comes to the fact that someone can walk into a business, not be served in French and that the Office de la langue française can then come in and seize all the equipment, seize all the computers, whatever documents that they would like. So because the question keeps coming in the chat about what are the specific rights, I just used one in, in terms, is there another one perhaps? To me, it's a flagrant misuse of the due process that every individual has the right to in terms of the judicial process. So perhaps there's another right that you would like to point out, Dean, to the participants in terms of the specific measure in the Charter of Rights and Freedoms of Quebec that directly affects the rights of probably all citizens. Because I, yes, it will be levied against an English entre guillemets, as they say, business. But it could easily, if you take it to the extreme, I could walk into a French-Canadian business and say that I wasn't served in, in French. Because you don't even have to say who brought forward the complaint. There is no need for, to go before a judge and explain why you need to have all these powers to seize documents and equipment in any business. So would you like to perhaps tell us of another part of the Charter of Rights and Freedoms that is totally abrogated thanks to the notwithstanding clause? Although it has sweeping powers and it could abrogate any of the rights, at least, that's what we, that's what we have heard so far from all our witnesses.
I won't, I mean, I won't echo your witnesses. I mean, some of the guarantees around due process, at least in the Canadian Charter, are limited to a criminal context. And so one would need to be careful not to assume that they would be applying in the, the kind of regulatory context of Quebec language laws. But there are rights to impartial and independent adjudication when one's under the Quebec Charter. I, I want to be careful not to move into examples that I, I haven't been able to look at closely enough. So I, I don't want to follow you onto that terrain, I'm, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine, that's fine. Other witnesses have brought it forward, thank you.
Professor Lucky, there's, I'm not sure if you see the question in the chat talking about the substate units testing courts by legislating beyond the average towards the extreme in sort of a game of chicken. This strategy relies on long temporal horizons, what legal justifications can be used in the short term to better influence.
I, I'm sorry, I don't have much to say on that.
All right, no trouble at all. Lenny, your hand is up. Did you have another question or is it remains up from before? No problem. Professor Lucky, I, I have no further questions. If Lenny and Joan have also exhausted their own, I will simply thank you for your time and it's, it's a privilege to have you, you speaking on this. And, and thank you so much for sharing your, your vast expertise on this subject.
Thank you.
You had no final thoughts?
Yeah, I'll just wrap up. I mean, it's just, there's so much in this law. It's just really important to say whether one is coming at it from the perspective as an activist defending English rights, whether one is pursuing other things, whether one is simply a citizen. There is enough going on here that it is simply, you know, it's, it's, it's not acceptable to say that it is wrong or inappropriate or disloyal to French or disloyal to Quebec or anything of that nature, to be wanting to understand what's going on and to take the time to have our elected leaders study this in considerable length. And so it's, it's just very troubling to me that people would be sort of characterized pejoratively or that the suggestion, one, one's commitment to French, one's commitment to Quebec should not be called into question in virtue of one's wanting to see how this law affects the pluralist society that we cherish and its constitutional order.
Professor Lucky, a, a fine and important note to end on. Thank you so much for your time this morning.
My pleasure. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. In fact, next I will introduce four people. We have Julie Barlow, Nick Maturro, Chris Neal, and Guy Rogers, representing a hat-trick of cultural organizations. Those organizations being the Quebec Writers' Federation, the QWF, the English Language Arts Network, ELAN, and the Quebec Drama Federation, QDF. And they represent our arts community, the heart and soul of English-speaking Quebec, and I welcome them to the panel here this morning. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. I'd like to start now. Okay, my name, good morning, and that's a cheerful start to the morning. My name is Christopher Neal. I'm a journalist and writer and a board member of the Quebec Writers' Federation. And my colleagues who will be following are Julie Barlow, journalist and author of many books, including The Story of French, and president of the Quebec Writers' Federation. Guy Rogers is a playwright, multimedia artist and arts administrator, and is executive director of the English Language Arts Network. And Nick Maturro, also with the English Language Arts Network, is a musician, communications specialist, and project manager at ELAN, where he manages relations with the Quebec government. We will, I will be introducing the three, the three organizations on whose behalf we are speaking. They are first the Quebec Writers' Federation, which has over eight hundred members, including writers, translators, publishers, and editors. We organize workshops, courses, book fairs, and programs for youth and seniors, among others, often in partnership with community organizations. We also present annual awards to writers of fiction, nonfiction, poetry, children's literature, playwriting, and translation. The English Language Arts Network, or ELAN, is a nonprofit organization that connects over four hundred artists from the worlds of music, dance, theater, film, multimedia, and along with the arts organizations from all regions of Quebec. It serves, promotes, and represents the English-speaking artistic community. It also works with French-speaking artists to champion shared interests. ELAN encourages a Quebec identity that includes artistic, cultural, and social diversity. The Quebec Drama Federation supports eighty English-language theater companies, from student theater to the Centaur and the Siegel, and nearly three hundred performing artists. And it is part of the English Language Arts Network as well. La langue s'avère l'instrument de l'écrivain, donc chacun en réserve un respect scrupuleux, même voir même une révérence. Voilà pourquoi nous, écrivains et écrivaines de la langue anglaise, comprenons et respectons l'amour et la révérence qu'on nous constitue un francophone pour leur langue. Nous n'avons pas l'habitude d'intervenir sur la place publique, sur des enjeux politiques, mais nous nous sentons assommés de prendre la parole sur le projet de loi quatre-vingt-seize. Ils prétendent vouloir protéger et promouvoir le français et tentent de le faire, mais au coup de sacrifier la vérité, la rigueur et le respect pour la liberté qui sont incontournables pour les écrivains et les artistes, quelle que soit leur langue. Nous avons cinq points dans notre mémoire. D'abord, un, le projet de loi nous exclut. Deux, recul du français, aucune preuve. Trois, la clause dérogatoire, un abus. Quatre, le projet de loi impose l'homogénéité au dépend de la diversité. Et cinq, l'impact sur le financement des artistes. Premier point, exclusion. L'article numéro un du projet de loi quatre-vingt-seize a l'effet que le Québec est une nation dont la seule langue officielle est le français, contredit la charte canadienne des droits et libertés qui reconnaît le français et l'anglais comme langue officielle. L'affirmation au début du projet de loi nous exclut. Un million de Québécois anglophones, de la nation québécoise, soit plus de plus de treize pour cent de la population. Ils prétendent aussi annuler nos droits linguistiques. Est-ce que nous appartenons à la nation québécoise? Oui ou non? Cette affirmation exclurait de la nation québécoise presque toutes les membres de nos organisations, soit aussi des artistes comme Louise Penny, Heather O'Neill et Arcade Fire. Ainsi que nous, ceux qui nous ont quittés comme Oscar Peterson et Leonard Cohen. Deuxième point, sur le recul du français. Le projet de loi quatre-vingt-seize prétend se justifier par un supposé recul du français au Québec. Ce qui ne tient aucun compte des capacités linguistiques de la population non-francophone. Où est le recul, le recul du français? Il n'en a aucune preuve statistique. Par contre, les chiffres, les chiffres révèlent un bon remarquable du nombre d'anglophones ayant appris le français. On remarque une révolution tranquille chez les anglophones du Québec. Le dernier recensement démontre la forte croissance du bilinguisme chez les Québécois anglophones. Il a presque doublé, de trente-sept pour cent en quatre-vingt-onze à soixante-dix pour cent en deux-mille-seize. C'est un taux de bilinguisme deux fois plus élevé que chez les Québécois francophones. Et en deux-mille-seize, parmi les jeunes Québécois anglophones, quatre-vingt-sept pour cent parlaient le français. Comme moi, ces gens parlent français en public lorsqu'on leur demande de le faire. C'est ça la langue commune. On est déjà là. In Bill ninety six, the government proposes major language policy changes without considering these data. Bill ninety six is thus an unnecessary provocation. Unnecessary because as French is Quebec's public language, the data show that the battle has been won. A provocation because it betrays the solidarity with French shown by the vast majority of English-speaking Quebecers. On point three, or point three, the notwithstanding clause. In the absence of real evidence that the public or common use of French in Quebec has declined, indeed, the data show the opposite. And in the absence of evidence that English-speaking Quebecers and Alaphons have resisted francization, again, the opposite is true. There is no justification for the extreme and undemocratic suspension of charter protections. Many legal experts, we've just heard from Dr. Leckie, have addressed this issue at this hearings, at these hearings. So I will just say that we too consider use of the notwithstanding clause abusive and demand that it be withdrawn as a matter of principle. Over to Julie Barlow now, who will address parts four and five of our brief, after which Nick and Guy will add further points on the potential negative impact of Bill ninety six on artists.
Thank you, Chris. Point four of our brief is that Bill ninety six sows division and dismisses diversity. We believe that the vision behind Bill ninety six, its restrictions for businesses, the space it opens for depriving the rights of a linguistic minority, all this risks creating divisions and rancor. It implicitly dismisses the contribution to Quebec by minority cultures. Le projet de loi cherche à effacer la minorité de la langue anglaise de la vie publique au Québec. Nous percevons là une vision étoncée triste de Québec qui exclut les groupes minoritaires et rejette la diversité culturelle. Bill ninety six, like Bill twenty one before it, we believe would promote a chilling effect. It already has, on cultural and linguistic diversity in Quebec. By explicitly denying the existence of an English language community and its language rights and denying this community the possibility of invoking the Charter of Rights and Freedoms to defend those rights, the bill promotes a vision of Quebec as a society that strives to be homogenous. This vision will make the province less attractive to minorities, which is T two to to our group. In this process, it diminishes the creative energy that arises from cross-cultural encounters and exchange. We are addressing Bill ninety six and Bill twenty one together here. Both reflect a way of thinking that is, in our shared opinion, averse to those who are not of the minority culture, majority culture or language group. Our members include writers of many races, ethnicities and cultures, and and what we have in common is is the use of English as as a tool of our creation. As noted earlier and and in our brief, we share a concern for the protecting the vitality of the French language in Quebec. We're committed to this. The French fact is Quebec's distinctive and attractive feature. Our respect and love for the French language and Quebecois community is among the reasons we choose to make Quebec our home. Whether we are from long-established English-speaking families or recently arrived from elsewhere, or the First Nations, peoples of Eastland. Many of our most decorated authors have chosen to make Quebec their home explicitly, and I'll cite Kathleen Winter, Dimitri Nasalis, Shawn Michaels, David Homel, Anita Raabadami, and there are many others. Excuse me, I myself am originally from Hamilton, Ontario and chose to make Quebec my home. And as Chris mentioned, I'm the author of books on French and on France and have been a contributor to Quebec's main public magazine, book interest magazine, Lecterity, for twenty seven years now. French needs to be protected and the QWF supports those efforts, but Bill ninety six is not the way to do it. Most English-speaking Quebecers and Alaphons have gotten the message that French is the language of work in Quebec, as Chris mentioned, and they have learned it. This is in their interest and as knowledge of French is essential to gain access to economic and job opportunities. They understand this. History has shown that English-speaking Quebecers have been valuable allies in promoting French across Canada, which Bill ninety six claims as an objective. This is demonstrated by census data showing that almost half a million students registered in French immersion programs in across Canada, which is a sixty-nine percent increase since two thousand and three. And French immersion, as many, many of you probably know, but some may not know, was launched in nineteen sixty-five by three English-speaking Quebecers. Since their pilot program has had a Saint Lambert school, millions of English-speaking Canadians have learned French this way, including a number of members of my whole family. Unfortunately, this story is rarely told in Quebec. Instead, many people promote without supporting evidence, the notion that French is in decline and that English-speaking Quebecers and Alaphon minorities are somehow responsible for this. This is unfair and unfortunate, undermining the language rights of English-speaking Quebecers who have proved themselves allies in defending French risks destroying a social solidarity that has actually helped prevent the so-called decline of French that is so widely and without proof de pride. Point number five is 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 more specific to us as writers. Bill ninety six does pose potentially a threat to writers' livelihoods. We are concerned that the interpretation of the preamble claim in Bill ninety six that quote Quebec is a nation whose only language is French could result in discrimination against English-speaking writers. This is critically important to our work. QWF and as an organization and also individual writers who are the members receive funding from for artistic activities from various levels of government in Quebec, municipal and provincial. In recent years, for example, QWF has received sixty-five thousand dollar grant a year to fund its programs from the Conseil des Arts et Lettres du Québec with the Calc. I can speak from experience in saying that public funding is critical to all writers' ability to develop their career. There, there, there are, I can hardly think of a single exception. And I'd be happy to speak later about some examples of that. The Calc has demonstrated a commitment to equity in the distribution of its annual grants, which reached two hundred million in two thousand and twenty. It achieves these targets, it is set in its and its action plan for cultural diversity, its Plan d'action sur la diversité culturelle. The Calc recognizes that Quebec's population is composed of francophones, about seventy-eight percent, Anglophones, nine percent, indigenous people, one point two percent, and visible minorities, twelve point six percent. In its strategic plan for two thousand eighteen to twenty-two, it deserves that Quebec benefits from the contributions of these groups in our society. Quebec's cultural landscape is enriched by this larger diversity. This is directly from its plan. These demographic considerations are fairly reflected in the distribution of the Calc's grants to the arts, including the literary arts, or have been so far. The QWF is concerned that the orientation and direction indicated in Bill ninety six, that is, that the government sets the example in promoting French as the only official and common language of Quebec, will put at risk the fair and admirable equity principle applied by the Calc in its funding decisions. And the same fear could be raised about other funding organizations as well. Le maintien de ce principe est incontournable pour un très grand nombre d'écrivains qui ne pourraient pas produire leurs œuvres sans l'appui fourni par la gouvernance. And I'll stop there and let Nick and take, continue possibly about more examples of funding issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. ELAN shares the Quebec Writers Federation concern that subjective interpretation of Bill ninety six's claim that quote Quebec is a nation whose only language is French could negatively impact artists' access to the sources of public funding, which are fundamental to their professional practices. It also risks undermining the important work that has been carried out by funders such as the Conseil des Arts et Lettres du Québec in recent years to engage with the English-speaking community, with the help of stakeholders like ELAN, to create an open and welcoming environment. It's essential that English-speaking applicants feel confident that their applications will be considered in good faith, regardless of the language of their artistic work. This belief is already a fragile one in certain segments of the community. Through our own independent research and consultations with ELAN members, we have found that despite the laudable efforts of Calc and other provincial funding bodies, many English-speaking artists in Quebec remain reticent to apply for provincial funding because they feel English language art and artists will not be considered favorably. It's therefore clear that continued effort is necessary to combat these perceptions and to promote engagement with provincial funders. Community stakeholders like ELAN are enthusiastic about playing our part in this process. For example, ELAN's own Quebec Relations Project, which I'm currently overseeing and which is supported by the Government of Quebec's Secretariat for Relations with English-speaking Quebecers, was launched in direct response to these kinds of perceptions to increase communication and build stronger relationships between the English-speaking arts community and provincial funders. The English-speaking community has already responded favorably to this new channel of communication with the Government of Quebec and to the opportunity for greater engagement and productive dialogue in the future. However, the divisive language of Bill ninety six risks weakening English-speaking artists' confidence in the fair consideration of their work by funders and creating reasons to doubt the government's good faith engagement in ongoing dialogues with the community. Such an outcome would undermine the important work, pardon me, this important opportunity for improved communication as well as the collective efforts of Calc, ELAN and countless others. Similarly, arts organizations who already submit their grant applications in French may be given the unfortunate impression that funders are not willing to support English cultural content, regardless of the language in which they apply. For many of these organizations, this funding is crucial to their continued survival and to maintaining the number of quality employment opportunities they provide to artists and cultural workers within the community. While these economic concerns are particular to Quebec's English-speaking arts community, the overall context is one in which artists already live an increasingly precarious existence within the broader gig economy. This situation has only been exacerbated by COVID nineteen. Consequently, any unintentional negative impact of Bill ninety six on the English language arts communities, access to employment opportunities and sources of provincial funding within that broader context could have a considerable knock-on effect on the community's economic stability. Of course, we know these economic effects also extend to individual artists and cultural workers' mental health and consequently affect the overall vitality of the English-speaking arts community at a time when we are already faced with the challenge of trying to stabilize and reemerge during this ongoing pandemic. We also must not overlook the contribution that the English-speaking arts community makes to Quebec's cultural exports and its overall image as a place where arts culture are valued and supported. There is, of course, the example of the Arcade Fire's twenty eleven Grammy accepted speech and their heartfelt thank you to their adopted home of Quebec, a province that provided the rich and welcoming cultural environment for a band fronted by a California-born Texan and a Montrealer of Haitian descent to come together and achieve international acclaim. This is just one of many clear examples of English-speaking artists promoting the status of Quebec in front of a global audience. Any negative impact of Bill ninety six on English-speaking artists' ability to produce dynamic and engaging work both within the province and on an international stage only serves to limit the opportunities for cultural exchange for everyone. There is clearly the potential for considerable damage if Bill ninety six is allowed to undermine the English-speaking arts community's confidence in fair access to funding in keeping with its nine percent demographic share of the population. Therefore, we must ask what potential safeguards the Government of Quebec and its arts funders will put in place to ensure that the principles of representation are maintained and that English-speaking artists and organizations can continue to access much-needed public funding. And with that, I will pass things over to Guy.
Thank you, Nick. So I want to take our final few minutes to talk about some recent experiences with some of Quebec's major cultural institutions. I'm going to begin with Calc, the Conseil des Arts et Lettres du Québec. Linguistically, they distinguish between individual artists and companies. Individual artists can correspond with Calc in English and can write their applications in English. That is not true of corporations. There's always a question about whether an application submitted in English will be fully understood by every jury, but that's a risk that each individual artist takes when they make the application. Calc uses the submission statistics to monitor how many Anglos apply, how many receive successful responses, and they have made a consistent effort since they were founded twenty-five years ago to try to ensure that Anglos receive a proportional amount of Calc funding. I mean, Calc really is the gold standard of equitable interaction between the state and artists. Sodex, which is the other half of cultural funding, operates very differently because they only accept applications from companies. All communication is in French. In addition, there's no formal recognition of English language filmmakers. The way Sodex's funding envelope works is that eighty percent of the funding goes to French language productions and the maximum of twenty percent of funding goes to non-francophone productions. So that non-francophone production could be in any language. Now, of course, most of it is in English, but the wording of the program never specifically recognizes English as being that secondary language. Also, there are many cases of major francophone filmmakers making a film in English and that becomes a non-francophone production. Sodex is about industry, it is about dollars spent on productions in a specific language for a specific market. However, the importance of telling your own stories in your own language is fully understood for French language productions. And that's one of the raisons d'histoire for Sodex to exist. But there is no official recognition of an equivalent need for the English-speaking community to tell its own stories in its own language. Now, Nick talked about funding from the new secretariat for relations with English-speaking Quebecers for ELAN to help English-speaking artists know what funding is available to encourage them to apply, in some cases to assist them to monitor results so that they feel that they are fully supported by the by the state. That's been very positive. Now, I want to talk about some some examples of where we think that this new Bill ninety six could lead into troublesome territories. During the revision of Quebec's cultural policy two or three years ago, the Office de la langue française was housed within the Ministry of Culture and that created a similar situation to what we're seeing with Bill ninety six where promotion and protection of the French language was here and some kind of support of English language culture was here. And this one was so much more dominant in the minds of many people, irreconcilable with this goal. And during the hearings for the cultural policy renewal, there were three ministers of culture, two of them couldn't even bring themselves to talk about English language culture. One of them made fairly strong commitments to recognizing the historical contribution of English language culture and to make an ongoing commitment. I was part of the of the consultations a long time ago when the first cultural policy came out, and it was harder this time, after decades of cultural Renaissance in Quebec and and artists like Arcade Fire standing up the Grammys and saying merci, bonjour Québec. So there's been a recognition of English language artists and culture, but during this period of revising the cultural policy because of this conflict between promoting and protecting the French language and somehow finding a place to recognize English language culture, it was a very uncomfortable relationship. Now, I want to conclude with what I think is a much more alarming situation. Quebec has been very progressive for many years in having a culture in the schools program and then there's an equivalent writers in the school program. It was co-administered by the Quebec Writers' Federation and by the Union des Écriveurs de Québec. But at the same time that we were having this conflict, this existential linguistic conflict between promoting and protecting French and finding a place for English-language culture, the Culture in the Schools program decided to remove all English-language bios from their website, which was disturbing, shocking. Some people refused to put on a French-language bio, even though it was just a matter of translating it, but the principle of the thing was so offensive. And when Elan investigated why this has happened, we were told that it was just to respect the law that all government websites must be in French only. Now, there is no specific law to that effect and that has not been the practice. This was, this was an application of a policy. And as we tried to dig into the problem, we offered to have the English-language bios housed on Elan's website so that we wouldn't have to put the English language on the Ministry of Culture or the Ministry of Education website. They would simply have to have a button, if you want to see the English-language equivalent, go to Elan's website. And had there been a will to reconcile the alleged necessity of using only French on government websites with the desire to provide a service for all English speakers, the workaround that we offered would have provided a solution, but even that was too much to ask. So I asked the bureaucrats who'd been designated to explain to me why none of this could happen, why we were just going to have to live with a total absence of English language in this program. I said, it's a hypothetical situation. We just imagine that there is still one unilingual Anglophone artist out there and there's still one unilingual English-speaking teacher out there. And this program is there to bring them together, to provide them support for the benefit of the children of these communities. What is the purpose of putting this barrier between them so that they cannot communicate with one another in their mother tongue? And I have to say, it was a chilling moment when the bureaucrat just stared back at me blankly. She couldn't understand the problem and she couldn't even understand the question. And that failure to visualize problematic scenarios or empathize with legitimate concerns is what many of the conversations around Bill 96 have felt like. And when real problems begin to emerge, I can only anticipate more of the same. Thank you for your time. I want to pass this back to Chris for the concluding remarks.
Yeah, thanks very much, Guy. And I'd just like to wrap up by saying that thank you for the opportunity to present our views. And I'd just like to conclude that Quebec and Montreal in particular is an important cultural destination, not just for Canada, but for the world. It's a magnet for artists from across Canada and around the world. Think of our cultural festivals, the Jazz Festival, Comedy, Franco-Faid, Heavy Metal, Salon du Livre, Cirque du Soleil, film festivals. This diverse offering is really Montreal's brand and it's also a huge boost to our economy. And many of our award-winning authors and artists came here from somewhere else, as Julie outlined. They were drawn by the openness, the cultural diversity, and multilingual character that gives this place its vital energy. In Bill 96, however, we see no vital energy. We only see the dead weight of prohibition and bureaucracy. Its tone, character, and its content threaten to draw the curtain on so much that we've built together and not just a vivre ensemble, but a joie de vivre. So on that note, thanks for listening and we'll try to answer any questions you may have.
Chris, thank you very much. Also, thanks to Julie, Nick, and Guy for that extensive exploration of so many corners of Quebec's cultural world. I believe Quebec's arts and culture scene is something that we can all be particularly proud of as a rallying point and just a point of togetherness, not only if you live here, but when you watch it being exported on the global stage. We will have a chance to ask some questions. I see Joan will be asking the first question in a moment. If I may, I'd ask that if addressing a question to a particular panelist or a big group, that may just help target it. If you do not have a particular person in mind, please put the question to the group and whoever among you is most comfortable can jump on the question first. Joan Fraser.
Sorry, mute. Thank you. Thank you all very much. It's been an instructive, is the word I'm looking for, instructive few minutes. Guy Rogers, you talked about how it was harder now than when the first cultural policy was being drafted to get the message across to the bureaucracy, I guess, and perhaps some politicians in Quebec. Can you tell us, I mean, has it just been a sliding scale, getting harder and harder over the years? Or has there been a rupture at some point where suddenly it became more difficult to make the case?
Well, thank you. And we do try to be appetizing as well as informative, but.
You succeeded.
Having been on the scene for a long time, there was a, prior to the creation of the cultural policy, the original cultural policy, which created Calc and created Sodec, all funding went to the Minister of Culture. And there was a real perception that if you were not sort of born and raised in Ute alone, if you weren't friends with the Minister of Culture, you had little chance of getting funding. And there was a perception that Anglos just had to wander around westbound, knock on doors and, you know, money would flow into their pockets. I mean, that's a little bit of an exaggeration, but only slightly. Somehow the Anglos didn't need the support of the state because they had corporations and rich relatives and everything was hunky-dory. Now, with the creation of Sodec and Calc, we had arms-length funding. And I was on the founding board of Calc many years ago. And I know from the beginning, the idea was to make Calc the funding organization for all people and we had extensive conversations about how to outreach and include people who'd never applied for funding. And there was a sense of opening up, of a diminishing of barriers between, say, Calc was founded, when was that, 89, post-second referendum. It was like there was this tension building to the first referendum, second referendum, and then a release and a sense of, you know, we're in this together for the long haul, so let's make the best of it. And then things were going increasingly better and better. And I really thought that my kids, or at least my grandchildren, would never listen to this stuff. It would be all history that they would barely believe. But there has been a reversion in the past five years. You know, I attributed part of it to the Office de la langue française being associated so closely with the Ministry of Culture, which created all sorts of internal tensions. But in a larger sphere, I mean, it was like Anglos were kind of the darlings for a while there. You know, we were speaking French, we were integrating, and we were becoming a positive part of the community. And then suddenly, Anglos were either ignored or were uncomfortable to be around. And I can't really explain it, but I and many people have sensed this shift fairly recently. I would say within the past five years.
Thank you.
Lenny.
I was just going to thank everybody and you paint a very much a sad picture of where we're going in terms of English culture in Quebec. Joan asked the question, but I'm going to go a little bit farther. Have there been recent discussions with Mr. Skeet in terms of the impact of this bill or perhaps other attitudes, if I may call them that, of the public servants? Because you raised one, Guy, in terms how the public servant is very distached. Guy, Guy. Je dis Guy, je dis Guy. C'est pas grave.
You can always call me Guy, that's fine.
All right, Guy. Okay, Guy. So in terms of that, that would show a more openness in terms of, I'm not going to go into funding because that's not what the bill is about, but it will impact, obviously, funding in the long run. But have there been recent discussions in terms of raising some flags or alarm about Bill 96 and its full impact on the English cultural scene in Quebec?
Okay, I guess the short answer to that is that there has been no direct conversation about Bill 96 with Mr. Skeet. Although he's been very active with the Secretariat and the Secretariat has funded Elan extensively to help support the English-speaking community. And my, from what I've heard sort of indirectly, and probably most of you have heard the same thing, is that Mr. Skeet recognizes the need to promote and protect French as we all do. I mean, that's, and for him, it is not an irreconcilable contradiction to promote and protect French and also to support English-language culture. So I have no doubt that in his own mind, this is not a major problem and that he feels that the government is going to be sensitive to the needs of the English-speaking community at large and also to culture. But what we've actually seen on the ground in recent years is that when these two competing goals are put in the same space, one completely dominates the other. Not everybody sees it as a zero-sum competition, but some do. And when it is placed in the hands of those particular people, whether the bureaucrats or elected officials, it can create some severe problems.
Thank you. Thank you, Thomas.
Thank you, Lenny. A question from me, and Nick, this may be to you as it relates to the point you were discussing about access to funding and also the language of grants. Obviously, access to funding is incredibly important for artists themselves and regardless of the field. And Quebec is generally and traditionally viewed as quite a strong supporter of the arts. But it is the question about grants and just the barrier to access for artists to have access to that funding. And I'm curious if you could go into that a little bit more in terms of the implications of Bill 96 on that aspect of accessing funding from the province.
Well, I mean, I think it boils down to, obviously, there is a certain amount of subjectivity sort of built into the process when that comes to juries or to program officers who are there to sort of provide information and to sort of help people navigate these funding programs. So I think, I think it's a sort of a two-sided problem. I think there is the potential for that subjectivity to sort of become a factor at a sort of organizational level with the funders of Quebec. And I think the other sort of half of the issue is for people to not feel, to not feel welcome to then try to access that funding. And I mean, personally, in my work with Elan and communicating with artists and trying to help them navigate the funding system, a lot of them sort of tend to prefer to apply to, say, the Canada Council for the Arts to sort of naturally feel more comfortable applying for sort of federal dollars just because they don't, do not feel that they'll sort of get a fair shake, which sort of, that may be right, that may be wrong. But there clearly is a lot of work to be done to sort of continue encouraging people to feel like, no, this public funding is available to them. So I think that's kind of the biggest issue that I see in this as it's shaping up.
Could I just add something to that? It's that what we're concerned about in Bill 96, there's frequent mentions of the government has to set an example by using French in all its interactions and to promote French and be French completely. And that concerns our community because we don't see any incentive for government officials to promote English, which is what we're asking them to do, to promote English-speaking culture. And in the absence of incentives, I mean, I've worked in government myself. Bureaucrats respond to the incentives, to the messages that the politicians send them and they don't want to be caught out on their back foot doing the wrong thing. And this risks being seen as the wrong thing. So that's, that's our main concern.
Thank you, Chris, and also thank you, Nick, for your previous response. A final question, perhaps, there is a question in the chat that I can read to you from a few minutes ago, which is, would you favor a different description of the linguistic character of Quebec in legislation and the Canadian Constitution or just a withdrawal of any such description? I put the question to you, would someone like to take that one?
I can address that, I guess. I don't know the, you know, what are the views? I can't, you know, it's just a question on behalf of our members, 1,500 members altogether. I don't know that they'd say that. I think that we all feel a little bit more comfortable by Bill 96 or any bill like it if there was just an acknowledgement that others have made that point in these hearings, an acknowledgement that other languages exist in Quebec. And the point is that, yes, of course, the majority of Quebec's population is Francophone. Nobody contests that, but certainly not all of it. There's 13% or 9% to 13%, depending on how you count them, English-speaking Quebecers and Aboriginal or Indigenous people and minorities. Also, final point on the English community, as we all know, very diverse. Elaine is from, is an English-speaking Quebecer, but, you know, she's what they, the Alaphone community, for example. I mean, that's, this is, and you're going to be hearing from Clarence and people from the black community of Montreal, which itself is split between various language groups. It's, so some acknowledgement of the diversity of Quebec, I think that's what's missing from this legislation altogether to have this ethnocentric tunnel vision about Quebec is only the 70 to 80% of the province that are the Sush Francophone. That's, that's, that's a mistaken view.
Chris, thank you so much. I believe that we will have to leave it there. Thank you all very much for your comments and your testimony today, Christopher Neal, Julie Barlow, Nick Maturro, Guy Rogers. It's a great pleasure having you with us and thank you once again. Our next speaker, and my apologies for jumping ahead in my introduction earlier of Nakasat. Nakasat is the Executive Director of the Native Women's Shelter of Montreal and she is a remarkable woman who defines community activism. She oversaw the founding of Resilience Montreal, which has provided meals and clothing to the homeless during the pandemic. And it is a great honor to have her with us today, Nakasat.
Naguset, Nitsi Kason, Niha, Nijio, Oma, Niha. So what I said was, my name is Naguset and I am Cree. And for me, I needed to research how to say that because as an Indigenous person, my language is taken away. And I think that, you know, the government needs to, like, understand and recognize that we know exactly what it's like to lose our language and culture. And, you know, as Indigenous people, many Indigenous people have lost their language. There are sometimes communities where they only have one or two speakers left that actually have their language. And this was done mostly through government policies, assimilation policies, and government-run residential schools. So because these policies have, you know, started almost like, I don't know, depending on whether it's Canada or Quebec, you know, but since first contact, where we are currently is that there's an enormous amount of systemic discrimination against Indigenous people. And, you know, I have been working at the Native Women's Shelter for over 20 years and my concerns with Bill 96 is that when you take a language and culture away from a people and once they have survived these kinds of oppressive actions, the difficulty now for those that are in the city is that, you know, they have a lot of problems trying to access services and that there's issues with racial profiling. And going to the hospital, since Joyce Eschequon, is even more difficult than it was. Now, when the government created these residential schools, they did so by sending most Quebecers to English residential schools, right? So this is why Mary Simon, who is the Governor General, speaks Inotutut and speaks English because the residential school that was created was in English. So now, in terms of Bill 96 and forcing us to not access services in the language that we are forced to speak is going to be incredibly difficult. So we already know that when people try to go to, let's say, the Medicare office, there's a big sign saying, we'll only serve you in French. And that means that we have to send advocates with our clientele to access these services. But when, or, you know, Bill 96 is implemented, when we are in crisis... But when or, you know, Bill 96 is implemented, when we are in crisis, that's going to be a whole different like issue because will we able will we be able to reach out when we're in crisis in the French language? We're having difficulty doing it in English. There are still people that don't speak English or French. They still speak their Indigenous language. How are we going to be penalized by this bill? And I think that, you know, that the government is very much afraid of losing, you know, their language. And and we fully understand what that's like because that is our lived experience. It is our reality. But the government also has, you know, the opportunity to to do better and to extend an olive branch to the Indigenous community and recognize the struggles of having their language and culture taken away and and to do better. And, you know, there are many different ways that they can do it. But I think the bottom line is that if he if the government doesn't acknowledge our struggles and try to support us in the language that we're comfortable speaking in, that what will happen is that people will die. And I know that sounds really grave, but it is exactly the truth. We are already seeing it within the streets of Montreal. And this is already when, you know, English is permissible. But if it's not, how are you gonna communicate with that person when you call nine one one? How is that going to work in in really every sort of, you know, health and social services? It's going to be incredibly difficult and we are already struggling. So I really, you know, ask the government to look into how they can support us because we clearly understand what it's like to suffer from having your language taken away. And I don't fear that that is a Quebec reality, that their language will just disappear. I think they're very strong in their language, but having oppressive measures, we know what happens. And and perhaps he can reflect on the difficulties facing Indigenous people and and really be empathetic and supportive of our culture. That's all I got.
Thank you so much for joining us and for your your testimony and just simply to underline that the the fact that, what is at stake? And I think you very aptly put it that access to services quite literally is is a matter of life and death. And I I do simply want to reiterate that point as as it is paramount, I believe, to to that question of access. I will now open the floor to questions and I will pass to Joan Fraser, who will ask first.
Thank you so much. I was nearly knocked off my chair when you said that at an office, a Medicare office, there was a sign saying we will only serve you in French. There is no such provision in the law as it stands, although it might become more common under Bill 96. But has is is that a longstanding thing? Is it new? I mean, the notion of a sign that says we will only serve you in French is mind boggling to me. And I just wonder if you could elaborate a bit on that.
So you have to understand that I have been working with Native Women's Shelter for over twenty years. And I used to be an outreach worker. So part of my job was to take the clientele to, you know, getting, you know, getting their identification. And there was a sign in French saying that French is the is the language and you have to speak it if you want to be served. And of course, it wasn't French, right? So this is why, you know, we need to accompany our clientele to all different kinds of institutions. So whether it's, you know, getting your identification, getting your Medicare card, going to the hospital, having a clear understanding about, you know, what your your health status is. You know, we need to sort of, when it's in English, we still need to break it down to the clientele about what the implications are of, you know, the medications they need to take, if they have any questions or whatever. And even in even in English, it's hard to sort of almost coax the client to asking questions because of the fear of, you know, what happens in the hospitals. So we know what happened with Joyce Eschequon. The the whole behavior has been ongoing for years. So even though Joyce's particular issue was was quite devastating, we still face a lot of language barriers, racist barriers at the hospital. And this is why we rarely send women to the hospital by themselves. So if they if they're not comfortable actually asking the doctor in English about, you know, what their status is, how is that going to work when they can only do it in French? How is that going to work in youth protection when a lot of Indigenous families are overrepresented in the youth protection system? And it is usually bat Shaw. If how is that going to work about having to meet with social workers and and not understanding the implications of why their child is no longer with them and the mandate that they have to follow? Like, it's it's really it it hits just every single institution that we have to work with in order to be sort of stable and empowered. And we it feels like we are just starting to catch up. And so the implications of this bill going forward is going to set us back. And and people are going to struggle. I mean, I remember years ago, there was a story about someone who had to call an ambulance and didn't speak didn't speak French. And he, the ambulance technician refused to speak in English to explain the status of his son's health. And he was in crisis. You know, we are in crisis pretty much every single day. So what is that going to look like? And I know it's really dismal to think about it, but I know I see how people pass on in the community, like the numbers rise for the Indigenous population. What is this bill going to do? And I think that the government needs to know that, that if we are already struggling and if if this bill goes through, that he is implicated in the numbers of deaths that rise because he's been forewarned. I don't know how else to say that in a good way.
Thank you, Nakuset. How are you? Nice to see you again. And thank you for all the work you are doing specifically for the marginalized communities in in Montreal and for your advocacy work. I think you hit it on the nail in saying, as Joan pointed out earlier, about this is really about access to services in life and death situations. And I'm wondering what more we can say as an organization, obviously with your support and your voice to the government to make sure that when it is dealing with certain youth in our society and their parents, as you brought out the scenario earlier, where the father had no idea what was going on, perhaps having these type of examples. Okay, real life examples, everyday examples that you face and your organization faces. Do you think that it would be useful to try to use some of those examples when we're making our points in terms of the the access to services that need to be there in order to save a life?
Absolutely, it'd be helpful. I mean, the thing is that we always have our staff accompany, and that is helpful. And, you know, we have even seen this with the Montreal Police, where there was a woman from Guanwagay whose daughter is was missing but was last seen in Montreal. And when she went to go make a police report, the officer refused to support her because she didn't speak French. And this is why we needed to, you know, have that staff who was able to translate. So it is an ongoing issue that we see all the time. And then there's this also colonial perspective where this officer actually told the woman to go back to Guanwagay. So you see where we're saying the assimilation and these these policies, you know, have affected us when it comes to systemic discrimination. And I know that, you know, you know, our our leaders are saying how they don't recognize systemic discrimination, but it is it is clearly there. And this whole bill is going to make it worse for our people, which means that, you know, we're I'm gonna have to, you know, hire, you know, a gazillion more people to to accompany everyone who goes everywhere in order just to be served in a good way, right? So we're fighting, we're fighting, you know, racial profiling, systemic discrimination, you know, racist attitudes and language, like we don't have enough on our plate, right? So, you know, ideally, the the premier would sit down with the different chiefs and have these conversations and come to the city to talk to the different community leaders because, you know, our people that we work with are from all the different communities that are trying to make a better life in Montreal and are falling through the cracks. So we're doing our best to support them. But, you know, take a look at the the numbers of homeless people in in Montreal. The numbers are rising and Indigenous people are the the highest percentage in all the homeless population. They are the ones that are going to need help and they are the ones that are going to get the phone hung up on them because they're not speaking French.
Just to what you just said, has has the premier made any or have vice versa? Have you made any attempt or the chiefs to sit down with Mr. Legault and Mr. Skeet, who is at the Secretariat responsible for not necessarily access to social services, but in terms of English language?
Okay, so you have to understand, I am an urban Indigenous woman, so I'm not affiliated. My band is from Saskatchewan in Lac Lrange. So I don't represent any in any, you know, nation. It's it's up to the the communities to reach out, their their chiefs to reach out to to the Legault government and have that conversation. So far, this is my first attempt to say anything about it. But, you know, we I'm I'm an advocate on behalf of Indigenous people. And and we are always solutions, sort of, we're always prepared to create our own solutions as need be. I just see this whole issue as being sort of like a tsunami that's that's facing us, that's coming. And and, you know, what are we going to do when when, you know, when we've suffered from, you know, this oppression of taking our language and culture away? And we haven't even sort of, you know, come up for for air. You know, another tsunami is coming. So it's what we want is for the government, you know, the government to recognize, look what it's done to us. You are not in the same boat as as all at all. And you need to, you know, have empathy and sympathy and and try to empower Indigenous people because what you fear is what we live. But it is not the same reality because it's not the it's just it's just not. So I think I'm sort of going on and on.
No, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lenny. A question from the chat that does relate to some of the earlier discussion on on language and the barrier to entry. Have there been any studies or discussion about mental health impact, specifically to the mental health impact of existing language laws that that may indeed be extended by Bill 96?
I I don't know anything about studies. All I know is what we see on a daily basis. And that, you know, the kind of systemic discrimination that we face is, you know, multiple, multiple levels, right? And and sometimes, I mean, you always have to communicate, but you know, what the the issue that is is brought forward may not be language based, right? So if you're suicidal, why are you suicidal? So what kind of oppressive measures have been forced onto you that you are feeling suicidal that day? And then when you have to communicate that, how is that going to work if you don't even speak the language? So that's why I'm saying it's going to be sort of, you know, it's going to be increased. Everything that we're already struggling with will increase and it's going to be more difficult. So if somebody wants to do a study, but we've been studied so much, but anyway, like, welcome to it. Sorry.
Thank you. And one final question that I'd like to ask following up on something in your testimony, which is that you you did suggest the government has the opportunity to do to do better, that they could extend an olive branch to Indigenous communities. And you suggested that there are many different ways it could be done in in terms of working with Indigenous communities to become better. Could you give us a couple of examples that you have?
Well, I think that, you know, they should because they are so concerned with, you know, protecting the French language, maybe they can also be concerned with protecting Indigenous languages, right? So, you know, there's all different kinds of Vian's Commission recommendations about this, you know, Undrip. There's so many different ways that you can look into studies, research, whatever, reports that have been done that all say the same thing. He has an opportunity to do that. So he could do that. Or he could just recognize that we were forced by the government to, you know, speak English and 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 recognize that we are still struggling with that. So do not force us to start doing this all over in French because we are going to fall. It's going to be it's 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 going to be really, really difficult for us. So I think he, you know, it's almost like what he fears is what is our reality. So he needs to ideally come to us to have these discussions and to understand, you know, the realities because we are all currently on Indigenous land. And I think sometimes that whole notion gets forgotten. So, you know, honoring the different, you know, nations that are in Quebec and having conversations with the communities. I mean, you know, he has Ian LaFreniere that's working with him. Ian has been, you know, as an Indigenous, whatever his title, Indigenous worker, government worker, you know, he's been one of the best, you know, and he has made some changes. But I think that, you know, now they have a mountain. Before this gets passed, they have a lot of work to do. And, you know, I know that, you know, I'm one of the I think I'm the only Indigenous person speaking out on this, but there's the possibility that others will also. Once it have, once it starts affecting the communities, they're also going to be stepping up. But he has that opportunity to just sort of reach out to be like, hey, so what was your experience losing your language and culture? Because I'm afraid of that. What was your experience? What should I learn from you? Back then, it seems like a no brainer that he could do immediately or he can send out some of his people to do immediately that he can actually, you know, before putting these, you know, oppressive measures onto a population, he can learn from them and then do better.
Nakuset, thank you so much to Joan and Lenny. If you had any final questions now, I invite you to do so. If not, I would, on behalf of the entire panel, I'd simply like to thank you for your testimony. This is an incredibly important contribution to the to the all of the testimonies that that we are hearing over several days. It is a different perspective and one that that we really must keep in mind in the context of Bill and frankly, in the context of of thinking about how we can build a better and more secure society. And I thank you very, very much for for your time. So thank you once again to Nakuset. I'll now turn to our next speaker, Mark Robic, who recently stated, as a French Quebecer who sees Bill 96 as a dangerous risk to our current younger and future generations, I feel compelled to do my part in communicating to the French community to explain the risks to themselves, their children and their grandchildren. Once again, quoting from Mark Robic. We look forward to learning more about his perspective and I invite him to share that perspective, his perspective with us now.
It's amazing, all the facets, as I'm listening to the different speakers, Nakuset, that, you know, all the different facets. We think of Bill 96 as all about the language, but it's far reaching in other areas, even into the 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 Charter of Rights and Freedoms, they touch on all of these. So my perspective was one as a as a Francophone, because I am a Francophone. Luckily, I had parents that had the insights to make sure that we spoke English as well in order to 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 expand our horizons, whether it's on personal or career wise. But as I'm listening to the different panelists, I I feel that, you know, one of the things that propelled me that propelled me, uh, or how can I say, even to the point of angering me, is the way we put out, they've been putting a wall over the Francophones eyes as well. I believe the majority Francophone is actually the silent majority. And I think, you know, if they knew the impact on themselves, is if you look at the Bill 96, there is an impact to the Francophones as well. For example, I have two grandchildren. When it comes time for them to choose their career or their future, will they be able to choose to go to an English CJP university? So I look at the way Bill 96 is being presented as a stepping stone bill where as the years progress, they're actually, it's actually gonna get even stiffer and stiffer uh, as far as limiting what people can do, including the Francophones. So, uh, I had written a brief, I was gonna read it, it's all in French, because the idea was to hopefully, um, you know, this is the first time I do any kind of activism, if I can call it that. So I didn't know where to, where to do the brief, but I wanted to decide with the Anglophones and the Alaphones. Um, and the indigenous people, as I'm listening to their, their challenges as well, which is absolutely incredible. Um, but we need to mobilize the Francophone community in Quebec. If the majority of the Francophones knew the impact to themselves. And you know what? Quebec would not be where it is today if all communities didn't work together, the Francophones, the Anglophones, the Alaphones, and certainly our immigrants who are probably our biggest creators of, of employment and, and they come to Canada, they come to Quebec and create jobs in it, in the, in the small, medium sized businesses. Um, so my, my concern for 96 is that, is that it's pulling wool over the eyes of the majority of Francophones in Quebec. It's making them believe, uh, that the more people speak English, and I don't believe for a minute, I don't, I don't subscribe for a second that the French language is in decline. In my, in my business and my career, I deal all across Canada and the US. So I go all over Quebec as well. And I can assure you, Quebec, Frank, the French is very much, uh, strong everywhere in our regions. And I think that, you know, uh, if you looked at Francophones in the Greater Montreal area as an example, they don't see the English as a threat as all, uh, uh, at all. But if you go out in the outskirts, they're not exposed to different cultural communities, they're not exposed to different languages and religions and whatnot. So it's, it's easy to instill in them, um, unfounded as it is, some fear, uh, of, uh, Alaphones, Anglophones, even different religious groups and different community groups. Uh, and that's appalling to me. And I, I'm appalled by the, the way the government, especially now we're in the middle of federal election. Everybody seems to want to appease what they believe is the majority. But the fact is, is we're not telling the majority the truth about what Bill 96 is gonna do. And like I said before, I believe very much it's a stepping stone. Uh, Bill, I believe it's just a first block in the construction of, of more severe, um, it, uh, controls, if you will, that the government intends on taking. Um, if you look at, um, you know, and, and Mr., and it contradicts what Mr. Lego says he wants to do. He says he wants to attract more immigrants, he wants to attract more, create more jobs. Well, guess what? A, a lot of the immigrants, uh, that are come here with your Bill 21, why would an immigrant come to Quebec versus going to Ontario where, you know, really the Charter of Rights and Freedoms are really respected? Whereas here, we, we use a notwithstanding clause to make other people's lives a little harder. If you want to attract people to come and work in the jobs that we need, we have over 200,000 jobs, I think we need to create, or sorry, we need to fill, the jobs are there. And Quebecers as a whole, as, as in general, don't want those jobs, but our immigrants do. Our immigrants are willing to work those jobs and like, you know, we have them coming in, working in the farms or, or in the hotels as far as, you know, uh, room maids and stuff like that. They're willing to take these jobs. Uh, Quebecers are not. So if you want to attract these, it's not by putting in laws like Law 96 or Bill 96 and all its components, that's gonna help do that. And then he says he wants to also, also attract industry to come and invest in Quebec. Well, I'll tell you, I've worked for two major corporations, ended up moving out of Quebec because of these, you know, the referendums and all that stuff. So why would a company coming from the outside invest millions of dollars to come into Quebec? And then after that, be told how they're gonna operate or how they need to operate, where they can just do it across the border and with a lot less bureaucracy. Cause if you, as you know, some of you may operate businesses, I do. You know, I have personnel that we, we have to take a lot of time just to fill in the affaires de langue française documents on a quarterly basis. And it takes a lot of resources to do that. So it's a lot of bureaucracy. So again, he wants to attract industry. He mentions the software industry, which is all English, by the way. Uh, he mentions also cinematographic or a motion picture production industry as well. Well, the majority of those communicate in English, is all the software is in English. Um, and then you have the, um, the affaires de langue française in the bill, and I'm jumping here because I'm, I know you only have 15 minutes, but uh, if you look at the, the extra powers they want to give to the OLF. Well, in what kind of, you know, democracy with a clear constitution, would we give an organization, government or, or paragovernment the right without a mandate or right out warrant to go into any one of our businesses to seize documents, to seize computer software, interrogate our employees, so on and so forth, without a warrant? Without a specificity, without specifying what they're coming to look for? And, uh, and also it opens the door, by the way, as what we call the fruit of the poisonous tree. If they find other things other than language issues, it opens up that as well. So, um, it gives a lot of power to the OLF, it gives them a lot of more money to do this stuff, which I believe we can use that money elsewhere, by the way, in helping the indigenous people and, and health and stuff like that. Uh, and certainly our senior citizens, they can need that, those funds. So, my, my point of view here is I think that the, it's the, it's a silent majority Francophone that need to be educated, they need to be, to step up and understand that, you know, this is gonna affect them as much as it's gonna affect us Anglophones and Alaphones and other cultural communities as well. Uh, and they gotta understand that we got to, we gotta work together. We succeeded in Quebec. We have some of the most innovative entrepreneurs in Quebec, if you look at our history. Cause that would not have existed without having Anglophones working or bilingual Francophones. Bon Balsi either, Unicelect either, we have amazing organizations. And it's the, it's the commonality of working together Anglophones and Francophones and Alaphones that create these opportunities and create this business. There's no way businesses can keep operating and they think they're gonna operate only in French. It's just not gonna happen. So, you know, my, my desire, my wish is if I had a magic wand, is that all the Francophones in Quebec would sort of wake up a little bit and see, this is gonna affect you, your grandchildren, your great grandchildren, when they want to expand their horizons, whether on a personal scale or, or professional scale.
Yes, we will not. Um, now I will open the floor to questions and as usual, I will see if Joan or Aleni would like to begin. Aleni, please.
Hi, Mark, how are you? It's been, it's been a long time, Mark.
It's been a long time. It's good to see you.
It has. It's great to see you and thank you for coming on. Uh, we were hoping at the QCGN to have more Francophones come and bring forward their, uh, point of view, especially uh, young people like yourself, young entrepreneurs, where the impact of this bill, although it's not, they don't realize it now, will be, uh, very negative on their businesses. Uh, I thank you for bringing forth all those points, a lot of which have been raised uh, by other, uh, speakers that we've had. Uh, I wanna be more specific, uh, since you've been around politics for, for, for a long time also. A long time also. Uh, so, um, maybe I should say it in any case, as a memory to your mom, who I had the honor and pleasure of working with, Louise Rabic, was a former minister in the Quebec government and Mark is her son. So, Mark, uh, I miss your mother every day, but that's neither here nor there at the moment. Um, what would we do as an organization more in terms of, uh, getting organizations? And we have been working at it and perhaps they've already answered the call because we were talking about which organization, like the Chambre de Commerce, the Montreal, or other organizations, uh, to come forward and talk about the long-term impacts of this, um, legislation. And I won't go into, uh, you know, what you also said about how the powers that are given to the Office de la Langue Française, and this has been documented already by other more, more expert speakers. Uh, uh, the, you know, no due process in terms of seizing, uh, equipment, seizing computers, seizing even business plans, it was even brought up. So what could we do more? One or two suggestions that you as a young Francophone feel would raise awareness uh, in the general public, uh, for, uh, speaking up and, and against this very, uh, this piece of legislation.
Well, first of all, I'll say thank you for saying I'm a young Francophone. Believe it or not, I've known you so long that I just turned 60 a few weeks ago. So.
That's young. That's young. My mother turned 91, Mark, that we won't go there.
The, uh, listen, as far as the other organization like, like Chambre de Commerce, the Montreal, Chambre de Commerce de Quebec and, and the other ones in, in our, in our wonderful provinces and different regions and, and areas and, and counties, now that. It's a question of mobilizing them as well, but we're so, people are so afraid to, to speak up and actually say, I mean, look at their federal politics going on right now, right now. I know that behind them, they're saying thi- this Bill 96, they can't even, even Bill 21, they all know this is all wrong. But they're so afraid to say that they're gonna contest it or they need to contest it to protect their rights and freedom in, in our constitution, the Quebec as well as the Canadian one. They're so afraid and it seems like we're just trying to appease them, rather than just, you know what? Let's face the bullet and let's really tell the Francophones across Canada, including the, the entrepreneurs, the Chambre de Commerce, these associations, the industries. They need to also speak up as well, cause I know I was speaking to an automotive industry and they were saying they realize it, but they're all afraid to speak up. Is there afraid of the repercussions? They, they really think that, who knows? Oh, if my company speaks up or whatever, OLF is gonna come in and do it, do it whole. You know, give me a hard time type thing. So I think there's a little of that going on as well. And that's what scared me about Bill 96, as I, as they say, read between the lines, you sort of see, okay, this is, this is a stepping stone type of bill. This is not gonna end here. This is gonna get worse. And so how do you go about it? And then I, I don't know, other than mobilizing and getting the, the different chambers across our regions in Quebec to, to speak to them, but also have, give them the courage, just they need to speak up as well. Um, they represent these, all these, the, all these, the PM, the, the small, medium sized businesses, they represent all these employees and, and, and their community.
Well, this is why we need them, Mark. We need them to be part of the discussion.
I had this story of, uh, a few years ago, I was driving down Saint-Jérôme and I saw these two gentlemen working on this machine. And I got very curious. So I turned around my car and I went and got and see what it was. And these were two brothers, small business entrepreneurs, uh, and he had developed this machine. I'm not gonna go into what the machine did, but it was extraordinary machine. And I said, you know, this thing can sell all over the world, cause it's an environmentally friendly machine. And, um, he says, we do, but we don't speak English. So within six months, I, I did everything for them in English and then they ended up selling these machines all over the world, only cause they, they, they had been, they had been in business, I think 12 years at this point, but only sold a bit of machines in Quebec as they couldn't go out. They had no idea. Well, that's the type of businesses that the Chambre de Commerce should be able to help and say, well, it's a language thing, it's gotta stop. It's gotta stop. Um, you know, I, I have other examples of other small businesses that after dealing with me, I actually took him to Ontario, I took him to New York and then he realized, my God, you know, I should, I should make sure my children can speak English, cause I can't believe that New York is so close. So we have a lot of Quebecers, by the way, that have never crossed the borders, except maybe to Ottawa and Oxbury. Uh, but they've never been outside of Quebec because they don't speak English and there's a little bit of a fear, uh, will they be able to communicate? Um, and so that's also something that the whole future of Francophones is also at risk here, you know, the, the, the quality of their life and, and let's, you know, I wish, I wish our politicians had more balls to say, we're gonna contest it. This is human rights in the constitution, the right, the liberty of the person. And this is touching it. And this notwithstanding thing has gotta stop. It's gotta stop. It's like a petulant child who says, well, I'm still gonna hold my breath till I turn blue, uh, you know, and so it's very, very frustrating, very frustrating.
Thank you, Mark, though, for your comments and coming forward. Thank you, Thomas.
Uh, thank you very much, Aleni. And, uh, um, Mr. Robic, I understand that there are frustrations, but I do ask that we keep the language clean, please. Um, if, if you don't mind, uh, Joan Fraser.
Uh, thanks so much. It's, it's been a common theme in these hearings that we need to be able to reach out to Francophones, to communicate with Francophones. But it's not good enough, not, it's not gonna be effective for just Anglophones to jump up and down and say, we don't like this bill. So I was wondering if you could give us your own personal impression of the arguments that are most likely to influence individual Francophones. I know you have a business background and you, you've been really eloquent on the need for chambers of commerce and things like that, but I'm just wondering about individual citizens. What are the arguments that will reach them? Economic arguments, arguments for their children's education, arguments about human rights? Which of those would have most resonance, do you think?
That's, that's a very good point, Joan, if I may call you, your first.
Of course.
The, um, the truth is, I mean, I, I, I don't, I paint a real picture. I don't try to put roses where there's no roses with it. It's a, it's a combination of, of, of fear and unknown of what's going on. Like I was, in my brief, I had written at one point, uh, the Francophones that live in the outskirts of the, of the greater, a greater, uh, metropolitan areas like Mon- like in Montreal, Quebec City, to a certain extent. Uh, it's all, and, and also the Sherbrooke area. So they're in the outskirts. And, and if you look at, and I, I cannot help but bring up Bill 21 at the same time, because all this instows fear. So at the risk of sounding a little arrogant or whatever, it's almost ignorance. So they're out there in the Btsebe, Segni, whatever, they're not as exposed to different cultural communities. Um, all they unfortunately sees what they hear or see in the news. And of course, every time we see the news about any kind of, uh, community, it's not always the good side. It's usually gonna be about, you know, you know, the, the, the bad sides of some members of some communities. Um, and then you gotta bring them back down to base and say, hey, there's, there are, there are as many Caucasians in the prison as there are other cultures as well. So I think it's a, it's a question of, and I know, cause I speak to a lot of Francophones, I'm very outspoken and I'll tell, I, I told them that I'm against 96 and then it, it starts a dialogue. And then they start telling me, well, you know what, uh, we don't want this type of community in our ne- in our neighborhood. And then you ask them why? And there's the key question, they ask them why. And there's where you see the, the innocent ignorance. And I'll say innocent ignorance, cause it's not, it's not, um, it's not, it's not, how do I say, uh, um, it's not out of intent, it's just they don't understand. Whether you're Muslim, whether, uh, whatever religion you want, you name them, or even race. We all want the same thing. We all wanna be loved, we all wanna love, we want a good, good life and freedom. That's all we want. And then they size in on, yeah, but this guy here did that. Yeah, but that's just one member. He's the men now, the minority, the majority of every religion that we know, every community that we know are good people. And this is what they need to understand. Where there's no threat to the Francophones, there's no threat to anybody. And, uh, but it's a perceived threat. And those, that's what I, I find appalling of our politicians, that they don't, they, they milk it, they milk it for their own end. And Bill 96 is very much milking that ignorance, um, innocent ignorance, uh, to that end.
Thanks.
That makes sense.
Thank you, Mark. Um, indeed, uh, and continuing from there, uh, there is a question in the chat from, uh, Eva Liddig. Um, and she asks, do you worry about your children or grandchildren's identity, uh, that it's at risk because of the English language?
My, me myself, no. Uh, I had, as, as, as I mentioned before, my parents were from Outrement, they, they, they Francophones of Outrement. And when they got married, it was back in 59, um, they understood that there was an English community that, you know, in, in the western part of Montreal. So they moved there along what I can name, but I, I, the other day I was trying to name, I remember all the family, French families that were in that neighborhood. And there were lots. I, I stopped at 80 or 90 different French families. And we all learned English simultaneously, cause our parents said, you know, we're gonna speak French in the house, we're gonna go to French school, uh, but the kids need to speak really good English for their own future. So it's the same thing with my son. My son now speaks three, as well. Forget the, forget the third language, but he speaks three languages from birth. And my grandchildren are now speaking both three languages as well, and they're six and three years old. I don't want them to, to, to not, and it's our, and, and the truth is, is about to protect fresh, to protect the French language, it's up to us in our own homes and families through education, to learn French, to understand French, but at the same time, learn English or a different language. Um, so I'm, no, I'm not afraid, I'm, what I'm afraid of, uh, is the choices. So when my grandson reaches CJP level, by then he's a young adult or young, both gonna be young adults. They have maybe where they wanna be in life as far as career or, or vocation or whatever. And I want them to be able to choose what they want. Now, remember, we're talking, we're talking CJP and university, we're talking adult children. We're not talking about, you know, little kids that need mom and dad to tell them what to do. So they should be able to choose and that's what scares me. And like I said before, 96 is a stepping stone. They wanna limit how many applicants or Francophone applicants can be, can apply at English institutions, uh, CJP University. Um, I think they're gonna squeeze that even more later on, they're gonna even so make it life even harder. I was talking to, uh, yesterday, as my, I was talking to a family, um, uh, Francophones and his daughter Naz. uh, francophones and his daughter now is going to go to the University of Ottawa. Because that, that's what she's thinking. Once this law passes, she probably might not be able to get in. So she's ma- making application go to Ottawa instead. So we're going to actually going to lose. That's probably my biggest fear is if they don't have choices. Some of our next generations are going to move away. They're going to go elsewhere. And that would be sad. That would be sad.
And Mr. Robic, a final question for me perhaps. The, um, you know, we've, we've talked about, you've touched on this and I'm, I'm kind of shining spotlight on it, you know? The, within the French population, it, it, Bill ninety six has not, say, captured hearts and minds in the same way as it has, um, English speaking communities, minority communities and so on. And there, there are a variety of reasons for that, but how do you think that there may be a way to gain that extra attention to, to make it an issue that is in part better understood? And, and, and not to say that this is the media's fault or anything else, um, but it hasn't received the, the media attention to the same extent, for example. In your opinion, what, 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 what could happen in order to just have a greater understanding and perhaps more support, um, for questioning of this?
Well, that's a, that's a good point that you make because I think just as the, just as the, we saw with lock twenty, well, we saw with the one oh one and we saw it with even Bill twenty one. Where the francophones seem to be, they, they were sold a bill of goods that all these laws don't affect francophones. So they haven't paid attention to them. You really don't feel that it affects them until you speak to them one on one. They have no realization. This is actually affects them as well. And by, by the way, so does Bill twenty one. So does Bill twenty one affect them as well? And so I think it's mobilizing and you say it's not the fault of the media. I, I love the media. I think media is an important part of our society. It's what makes democracy fantastic. But the media has a certain responsibility as well to weigh in. So if you look at the media that have radio stations and TV stations across our provinces, I believe they have a responsibility to, to, to put forth both sides of the, of each argument, of each argument. And I don't think they do a good job of doing that. I don't know, I don't know what it is. Uh, there seems to be a fear of contradicting Monsieur Le Go in his team. I mean, let's face it. I, I, I said, um, I, I shot a video that I was going to put on and I just, you know, I did change my mind on it, but I was saying that, you know, as far as the pandemic, Monsieur Le Go, Monsieur Dubey are doing a fantastic job. I don't think any other leader could have done any different. This is, you know, it's an unprecedented world event. However, where I stop is where Le Go is trying to really, uh, put the squeeze on, on our phones and Anglophones. He's trying to, he's trying to move it to a place that it shouldn't be. And I think the media needs to know this and he needs to have the courage to present that, that side of it. What's the impact on francophones? The media needs to do that. Radio stations in different areas of Quebec need to speak of this and they don't seem to want to speak of it. Or they seem to be a, a fear of talking about it for, I don't know what they're afraid of. But that's seen, that's, that's my sense of it. Because I know, I know that one on one, uh, you see the wheels turning and then you start seeing and see a different side of it and say, yeah, yeah, that's true. I, I didn't think about it. You know, so, uh, I mean, looking now, he's saying, he's saying we need that, we need more teachers and we need more, um, people, well, guess what? Bill twenty one just yanked a whole bunch of them out of our hands because they're going to go to another province. You know, this, so does that affect francophones? Of course it affects francophones because they also want hospital services as well. And they're not willing to go clean bedpans, but our immigrants are willing to do that.
All right, uh, Mark Robic, thank you very much for your time this morning. It has been a, a wonderful contribution. It's such an important point as well to have the francophone perspective. Obviously there are, uh, it's a very bilingual hearing in its own right. But I greatly appreciate, or we greatly appreciate you, um, uh, and your perspective here today.
Well, I appreciate everything that you guys are doing. Uh, uh, behalf of the francophone community, I wish, I wish the whole francophone community would, would just support all of us together. We're all in this together, right?
Indeed. Mr. Robic, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, once again, this is Andrew Kedell, retired Global Affairs Canada after twenty year career. And is currently a columnist for the Hill Times as well as Colin Standish, a constitutional lawyer. I invite you both now to, um, to make your testimony. Thank you for being with us.
Thank you so much, Thomas. And we greatly appreciate the opportunity to be here today. And myself, I'm Chair of the Task Force. Andrew Kedell is another member of the Steering Committee and the Executive Committee of the Task Force on Linguistic Policy. Um, and I'll be going first. I'll be speaking, uh, about more of the legal aspects, introducing the task force and then Andrew will take it away with more of the sociological analysis and wrap things up for us before hopefully take a few questions and answers. So, so once you get to start, I start this off, that so I've chaired the task for some linguistic policy that I think it's appropriate that, um, I introduced our group a little bit. We are sort of new on the scene that we were founded in late May, twenty twenty one, um, launched in late June, twenty twenty one. So really only two and a half to three months old. We do count about three members of our executive committee. We have a steering committee. We, we started up just a variety of like-minded concerned citizens from across Quebec and as well ex-Patriot Quebecers throughout Canada and the world. Um, to really come together to try and stop the White Paper, Bill C thirty two ninety six and the proposed Constitutional Amendment. So four things, two of them are parts of each other, but many things that were going on in regards to linguistic policy and are, once again, fundamental restructuring of our country and federation. And so people wanted to, to come together to really try to stop these things, not just amend them, not just, um, not just write about them, but actually try to, to organize in a coherent and collective way. Um, to try and stop these two pernicious, uh, laws, um, that are on the table and one obviously, uh, suspended given the federal election. Um, and right now the task force has about eight hundred regular members. Um, we have about sixteen hundred people on our Facebook page. We've raised, um, well over ten thousand dollars, um, from, from well over a hundred different donors. So, um, in a very short period of time, we've become sort of a, a real organization. We have a, a website, Protege in No Dois, or Protect Our Rights.ca. I encourage everyone to check it out to learn a little bit more about the task force. And so that's just a little bit about who we are and what we're doing, but we do want to provide an independent, uh, voice. Um, we are membership based. We have no public funding, no corporate funding. Um, we're beholden to, to no one except, uh, except our members and obviously just focused on the policy at hand, which is stopping these two pernicious, uh, language laws. And then today, obviously we'll be speaking about Bill ninety six, the government Quebec's language law. So, uh, once again, it, the, the largest thing I'd like people to take away is that this is not just a language law. It's that Bill ninety six redefines, it restructures language and human rights in Quebec and Canada in fundamental and illegitimate ways. The reengineering is incompatible with, incompatible with individual rights and, uh, and natural justice, human and civil rights, national unity and a bilingual country. The task force opposes, firmly opposes all of Bill ninety six. Uh, the bill, as we all know, contains over two hundred amendments, including vast search and seizure measures, restrictions on who is entitled to receive government services in the language of their choice. A cap on English sage enrollment and a false definition of who qualifies as a member of Quebec's English speaking community. It seeks to eliminate, uh, the bilingualism more of fifty of eighty nine bilingual status municipalities across Quebec. In effect, Bill ninety six deinstitutionalizes the English language and its speakers in the province of Quebec. The task for, uh, task force, pardon me, primary reservations are six full. Firstly, Bill ninety six is not promote, protect or increase the French language and usage, home language, mother tongue or first official, first official language spoken. Secondly, Bill ninety six effectively erases the English language, its institutions and individual speakers from the civil society and public administration in Quebec. Thirdly, the proposed, uh, unilateral Constitutional Amendment is itself unconstitutional and ill-advised public policy that will affect other aspects of the Canadian Constitution. Fourthly, changes in the interpretive framework for Bill one oh one and the Quebec Charter and other laws that distort fundamental freedoms and human rights in the province of Quebec. Fifthly, freedom of expression, commercial expression and practice, work and employment, contractual liberty and freedom of education are all constrained for all Quebecers of all linguistic groups. The use of the provincial notwithstanding clauses will, and, and pardon me, national notwithstanding clauses will suppress basic human rights for all Quebecers in extreme and illegitimate ways at home, at school and the workplace and in commercial transactions. Uh, the task force will discuss these issues and do a holistic analysis of the detrimental, illegal and unconstitutional aspects of Bill ninety six. Uh, I'll try to keep it fairly focused today and I'm going to try to focus on some things that people haven't necessarily spoken about. Some of the other speakers that these QCGN hearings have been very articulate about, you know, certain points that, that affect their core constituencies. Most particular, we've seen obviously much written about in the media, but there's certain things that I think have, have gone under the radar. And a few of those things that I'm going to speak about in particular today are, is once again, uh, the French language's status above every other human right in the province of Quebec. Bilingual municipal status. Um, also I'm going to speak about the notwithstanding clauses in a perspective people might not have had before. I'm also going to speak about the restructuring of who can access English language services in Quebec. Also going to speak about the civil sanctions aspects. So there's a search and surveillance, but in particular the penal infractions that go along with it. Um, and as well, oddly, uh, the last one is, is, is naming a child. So these are things I'm going to speak about in the next few minutes' time. Um, and I'll try to be specific in regards to the aspects, the articles of law, um, and as well why, uh, as well, what informs my legal analysis, that be case law or doctrine, but I'll try to make sure it's, uh, it's anecdotal as possible to make sure that it is not just a, a, a repetition of a, a legal analysis that will be made public in the very near future. So once again, one of our major reservations, um, is the implied restructuring of our constitution and Quebec's legal status in, in Canada. In many of you might be thinking that I'm talking about the proposed Constitutional Amendment. I will speak about that briefly, but I'm actually speaking about other aspects of the law that I think have not had enough, uh, enough play thus far in the debate on Bill ninety six. So there's a few things I'm going to be speaking about and, uh, and once again, it is, it is a fairly holistic analysis and it really goes back to the bedrock of Bill ninety six. That is a restructuring fundamentally of Quebec's place within Canada and as well individuals' relationship to the government of Quebec. So I'm going to speak about a few things that, that come up throughout, uh, throughout the entirety of Bill ninety six. Um, and, and, and those keywords or terms are, um, that are, that are mentioned in preamble, section one and two, section sixty two, and as well in the proposed Constitutional Amendment at section one fifty nine of Bill ninety six. Uh, the terms I want to discuss, um, are Quebec nation, only French speaking state in North America, state, parliamentary sovereignty, Parliament of Quebec. And, uh, and then as well, I will talk, um, about the definition of common language and then official language or only official language of Quebec. So those are many different terms, but they are key to everything throughout Bill ninety six to the different amendments of the laws and as well the Constitutional Amendment itself. And as well, um, a discussion of section one thirty three of the Canadian Constitution as it currently, uh, and it stands in its unadulterated form. So I'll try to go then one by one. I know I said a variety of things. But, um, but, but for this, once again, Quebec nation, I think that's once, you know, uh, a very loaded word. We've seen, you know, last week it really was, uh, making the front pages of, of, of English and French newspapers in Quebec and not even to get into necessarily the sociological definition that there can be, you know, could be positives and negatives that are subjective and not necessarily, um, prove, prove, uh, proven or unproven. But once again, um, the Quebec nation is something that the, um, the GAC government has been inserting into legislation throughout their tenure. Um, in my study of legislation in Quebec, that the, the term Quebec nation has never been used before, um, except in twenty twelve in reference to one very specific and, uh, and one very specific act, um, in, sorry, it was twenty eleven, an act to affirm the collective nature of water resources and promote better governments of water and associated environments. So a very obscure act, and that was the only time the Quebec's National Assembly has ever referred to a Quebec nation in law was in a very obscure act related to water and the environment. But since the ACAD government has been elected in twenty eighteen, has been, you know, sort of ritualistically inserted into some of our primary and most important legislation in the province of Quebec. And so, um, once again, uh, that, that this is, the, the, the term nation, whether we, whether we believe with it subjectively or objectively, um, it, it, once again, it's been inserted into much legislation and, and, and it's not necessarily defined. But Quebec, um, to be referred to as a nation is, is, is once, once again incorrect legally when we look at it in terms of the Constitutional Amendment and also the way it's used in legislation that, um, the official name of the province of Quebec, and this is a small thing, that I'll get into a little bit more, is, is unaccented. Quebec without an accent is the only official term for the province of Quebec. Quebec with an accent in English and French is actually not the, not the correct term. Quebec without an accent is the only official name for the province of Quebec. I just want to clarify that because I think it's been, it's, it's, it's misused and illegally in, in English and French numerous times, but, um, it, it's just something we need to, to look at as well. And the insertion of the Quebec nation, um, that term, particularly in the Constitutional Amendment, that the structure of the eighteen sixty seven constitution really revolve around two things. It's section ninety one and ninety two before section ninety one, Q two, or ninety, uh, Q one, two, and, uh, the, the, the section one fifty nine of Bill ninety six is that you have provinces and you have the federal government, that municipalities and territories, as we know them today, municipalities are, are very powerful creatures within, uh, within our daily lives, but have very little legal constitutional status. They can be remade, um, at the whims basically of the provincial government. But inserting the term Quebec nation into the eighteen sixty seven document, it really is a fundamental restructuring of what we knew existed. And how will the Supreme Court, how will, um, Superior Courts interpret, um, this new nationhood status that's inserted into it? And as well, I want to call attention to section one fifty nine where it says Quebecois or Quebecers are a nation and also the Quebec nation. So it actually declares a nation twofold, and I think very few people have spoken about this. An eth- you know, a sub-provincial ethnic group and then secondly Quebec nation. So it gives a territorial status to it and Quebec. As, as once again, I was going back to legal interpretation of, of Quebec and unaccented Quebec is, is the only term for the legal structures that make up the province of Quebec. So it's, it's assigning a nationhood that's territorialized by what is recognized in our constitutional documents as Quebec. So once again, sub-provincial, um, ethnic group or, and as well, it assigns a territory to it and as well, it seems to be defined solely by the French language, common language and official language. I'm going to get into those terms. But once again, it's a radical restructuring of what our eighteen sixty seven constitution was. You have provinces, you have the federal government. There really is no other, um, definitive jurisdictional order within that document itself. And people talk about the Canadian Constitution is, uh, um, once again, that's another thing. I don't want to get too far into the weeds in, but the nineteen eighty two constitution, people say, well, Quebec hasn't consented to it. It's not legitimate perhaps. Those are completely morally, intellectually and illegally irrelevant arguments that the nineteen eighty two constitution applies wholly to Quebec. And there really is no legitimate argument against it, except for people just don't like it politically. And I understand that's a common narrative, but legally constitutionally, the nineteen eighty two constitution fully applies to Quebec. Um, and if they did ratify it, there would be certain, um, aspects that would come into play regarding section twenty three, but I'll talk about those at a later moment. And then as well, the other term that I wanted to speak about was only French speaking state in North America. I think this is factually incorrect and this is in part of the preamble, section one and two. And by its own definition externally and internally, Manitoba, New Brunswick and Canada all have the right to pass or must pass legislation, English and French and regulations for them to be official. And otherwise they are not official legal documents or, or have legal status. K D as well is in North America, even though it's in the Caribbean, it is a French speaking state. All of these meet the definition of state in article three thousand seventy seven of the Civil Code of Quebec, um, which is actually quoted in Bill ninety six. So Quebec is the only French speaking state in North America is not by definition, uh, correct. And as well, of course, that ignores many of us in the, uh, this, this, this meeting today, where twenty percent of its population are not, uh, mother tongue French speaking. Also the term state comes up capitalized state throughout Bill ninety six and also in certain other laws. So once again, uh, Bill ninety six, it does define it under the Civil Code, three thousand seventy seven as, uh, as it refers to a territorial unit with a different legislative jurisdiction. But once again, it seems the way they use it in Bill ninety six is sort of to confer some sort of statehood. It's not just some sort of legislative state, but they sort of imply that Quebec is a state itself capitalized. It seems to imply, um, some, some, you know, some sort of status or meaning of an independent state on the international stage in law and international relation. So it's one of these little words we should take a look at. Also parliamentary sovereignty and Parliament of Quebec come out throughout, um, Bill ninety six at certain points. Parliamentary sovereignty is something any legislature can have. But it raises concerns that when it seems to imply a sovereign legislature would, would be one of an independent or a sovereign Quebec, I think is deeply problematic. And as well, the term Parliament of Quebec, um, is not something that's, that's generally been used, that there's a parliamentary building in Quebec. Uh, the Hotel de Palmas, it's also used, but, uh, Parliament of Quebec is not the nomenclature used for the National Assembly. The National Assembly is a legislature within the parliament buildings of Quebec. The parliament itself is not this, but it seems to equate it with the federal parliament. The federal parliament does have legal weight of the monarch, the House of Commons and the Senate. The Parliament of Quebec does not exist as a legal entity, but it seems to imply it in this bill by reference to a Parliament of Quebec. These are very small semantic things, but once again, they have very significant legal meanings. State, parliament, um, and nationhood inserted into the foundational legal documents, the constitution, but also into Quebec legislation. I just wanted to signal this. I don't think it's been talked about quite enough and it could have potentially detrimental effects going forward. Um, also wanted to speak, you know, a little bit as, as well, I said about common language and French is the official language or only official language of Quebec. Regarding common language, um, it is defined at section sixty two, to a certain extent, not wholly, as the common language of the Quebec nation in French, and it goes on regarding host language, language of integration and cultural communication, et cetera. But regarding common language is not actually, it doesn't have a standard legal definition beyond, um, an incomplete one in section, in, in Bill ninety six. Um, and I think it perpetuates the legally and politically unfounded idea that French is solely and most critically defining characteristic of being a Quebecer. And so what legal definition could be accorded to this statement? Is that, once again, it could be the most, you know, could be the most used language, if you look at Merriam-Webster Dictionary, which is often used in legal interpretation, occurring, or frequently occurring, widespread, general. But it can also mean a lack of privilege or status, falling below ordinary standards or second rate, that common can be lacking refinement, coarse, or vulgar. It is doubtful that Quebec legislature would want to apply these terms to the French language, but once again, it is ill-defined and not defined in law, the term common language. And once again, if we look at some of the terms I used by just looking at the dictionary, which is used for legal interpretation, it could take on a very undesired or unpleasant status in Quebec. So we need to be, I think legislators should be mindful of that, and as well for us, that it is starting to be incorporated throughout other legislation. There's the Act on Quebec's Socioeconomic Prosperity, and also the Quebec Immigration Act, refer to common language, which, once again, delegitimizes the English language in the province of Quebec, and, once again, could have a perverse even interpretation before courts of law, as I was just discussing. And as well, regarding the only official language of Quebec is French. So this comes out throughout Bill 96. It is in the title of the act itself and is incorporated into the constitutional amendment. You know, my legal perspective is that French is not the only official language of Quebec. French has never been the only official language of Quebec. Even if one were to erroneously regard New France as the foundational state of Quebec, which it isn't, Quebec was a creation of the British in 1763. That is the antecedent for what we call Quebec and its territory and its laws and regulations, that New France did not even have French as an official language, though presumably it was the de facto official language. But since 1763, English initially had just the official status, but since then, it has been English and French, or just English, as the official language of Quebec, that somehow, the delegitimization of the English language in regard, which was, which has taken place over the last 50 years, is, I think, deeply problematic. And I think we've all sort of acquiesced to this, whether it be in law or in activism. But once again, French is not the only official language of Quebec. I realize that my interpretation is not wholly widespread throughout the English-speaking community even, but, once again, a solid legal analysis of Section 133 of the 1867 constitution of the case law, Blakey 1, Blakey 2, it's struck down large parts of Bill 101. There's Sinclair, there's Manitoba Language Rights Case in the 1980s. If we really look at it, that the quality of English and French, every law has to be in English and French, every regulation, every bylaw, our courts and our legislator have to function equally in English and French for there to be an official status of an act of the Quebec state, so to speak. So for example, Bill 96 or Bill 101 would not be valid acts of law unless they were also passed and enacted in English. In English, so once again, there's some critical aspects there that we need to be mindful of. And this will change the interpretive framework.
Mr. Standish, I'm just going to interrupt for one brief moment, just conscious of time. We do want to have time for Mr. Cadell, as well as some questions. Please continue.
Can I wrap it up? Sorry about that.
Yes, absolutely.
I am wrong. So there's a lot of things to talk about, and Andrew has a lot to say as well, so I'm sorry about that. So once again, and I'm getting into the weeds on it, but, once again, there are still a lot of things in the Interpretation Act, in the Civil Code of Quebec, in the Code of Civil Procedure, that all sort of distort and pervert and make French above every other basic human right and freedom. And so it is critically important that we take a look at those. And so I went over some of the large structures in regards to it, but it really is critical to look at it, that they are going to pervert and distort over time the entirety of our legal system. And I think that, and once again, I think the QCGN has compared Bill 96 to an iceberg, that we see certain parts of it, but really, there's so much below. But I would say Bill 96, to a certain extent, is sort of like a black hole legally, that everything gets sort of sucked in, that, you know, gravity itself, but everything legally is distorted and perverted by what Bill 96 is. And I know I am running out of time, my apologies in that regard, so I'll just wrap that up in a moment. But there are, you know, very large structural issues, and I do want to talk about one in particular, is once the civil sanctions, is that you get $700 to $7,000 for an individual, $3,000 to $30,000, and they could be tripled up to $90,000 for three infractions under Bill 96. And these are very, and once again, these aren't even for large infractions. They can be, they apply to Article 78.1, which reads, "No person may permit or tolerate a child's receiving instruction in English." That can lead up to a $30,000 fine for an individual. So on that note, I want to pass it over to Mr. Cadell. I'm sorry for taking up so much time today, but I wanted to sort of grant the brass tacks that, once again, Bill 96 and the task force stand to really highlight this is a fundamental restructuring of our country and our federation. Andrew.
Thank you, Mr. Ledwell. Thank you, Colin. That was very thorough, and I'll try to follow up in the same vein. Committee members, former colleagues, and friends, my name is Andrew Cadell. I've been a reporter in virtually every region of Canada, including at the National Assembly. I've advised ministers and premiers. I've run for office at the municipal, provincial, and federal levels. I've served at the municipal level. And I'm putting my name forward for the council in Kemba-Resca, where I now live in my family's ancestral home. I worked for the United Nations in Geneva, Switzerland, Geneva, Switzerland, Skopje, Macedonia, and Dhaka, Bangladesh, and I served with what is now Global Affairs Canada as a diplomat from 2001 to 2017. In helping to create the task force, we sought to develop a populist organization that was not constrained by government funding in establishing our policies that would complement, not compete with, the work of the QCGN, that would be a voice of reason, a source of pertinent analysis, and would speak truth to power. From the start, I was adamant we should establish certain principles. To that end, Colin Standish and I drafted an op-ed, which appeared in The Gazette and several other English newspapers, which clearly stated our beliefs. Allow me to repeat them here. One, Quebec's English-speaking community is a distinct group of over a million people who share a common language, as well as established institutions, values, history, and culture. The English and French-speaking communities have long worked together for the betterment of Quebec, having lived side by side, married, collaborated in the community, and supported one another in democratic endeavors. Three, the English-speaking community is dynamic, diverse, multiracial, and multicultural. It embraces the people, people of indigenous, African, Asian, American, and European heritage of dozens of ethnicities and faiths. Four, our support for Canadian federalism does not diminish our love for Quebec. It is a belief in a country praised as one of the greatest in the world for its capacity to embrace difference and encourage understanding. Five, we oppose any legislation that reduces the rights of any of our fellow citizens based on language, race, religion, gender, sexual preference, or national origin. Six, the only way to create a better society is through dialogue and protection of the rights of all, not through the imposition of laws that reduce access, diminish rights, or create barriers between people. Seven, English Quebecers are the largest bilingual community in Canada. We choose to live, work, and raise our families here, but we do not accept being discriminated against for who we are. I am sure those principles resonate with the members of the committee and those watching today. I think they should also resonate with moderate francophones, francophones outside Quebec, as well as our own fellow English-speaking citizens. Among our members are some experts who have provided analysis, which is very pertinent. I'm indebted to Rahul Majumder, Derek Heatherton, and Ben Huat for their extraordinary work. Here's a sample of their analysis of the economic effects of language policy. There's been a net outmigration of allophones from Quebec to the rest of Canada for each census period from 1966 to 2016, amounting to a net outflow of 120,000 individuals. Many of these people were well-qualified and received government language training in French. There's been a net outmigration of Anglophones from Quebec to the rest of Canada for each census period from 1966 to 2016, amounting to a net outflow of 310,000 individuals. A study of immigration based on the 2011 census showed that Quebec-born Anglophones with a higher university degree, PhD, MA, MD, dentistry, were less likely to stay in Quebec than Quebec-born Anglophones with a college or high school diploma, despite being as bilingual as their peers who remained in Quebec. From 1971, pre-Bill 101, to 2018, enrollment in English primary and secondary schools dropped from 256,000 to 96,000. This threatens the critical mass necessary to maintain such institutions off the island de Montreal, despite the government's vows to protect minority linguistic communities. Should Bill 96 pass, this effort effect will be amplified by capping access to English sejps and will likely put the future viability of small sejps, such as Champlain-Lennoxville, Champlain-St. Lawrence, and Sejps de la Gaspésie, English section in peril. Another analysis looks into the implication for individuals of Bill 96, setting out, for example, the changes to Article 32. This is the current article, which reads, "The professional orders shall use the official language in their written communications with their general membership. They may, however, in communicating with an individual member, reply in his language." The new article states, "The professional orders shall only use the official language in their written and oral communications with all or some of their members and of the candidates to the practice of the profession. Unless otherwise provided for in this act, they shall use only that language when communicating orally or in writing with an individual member." According to the Office de Frappation, Quebec recognizes 46 professional orders with a total membership exceeding 411,000 people. Does that mean that policing the French language skills of 411,000 people on a regular basis? There are many other, more egregious examples. These sections of the law are serious and important, as we've heard. There are some elements of the law we can embrace, such as free French classes. Others we see as a challenge to overcome, like the requirement for resolutions on English language services in municipalities. But there's a matter that goes beyond the letter of the law, its social and political impact. When a government passes a law, it does so to offer a sanction or a support for a certain project or a behavior. It sends a message that compliance is important. If a government or municipality places a stop sign on a street, citizens know there's a sanction if one ignores it. If government pays to support a local tree planting group, there's an implication that this is a social work act worth supporting. So when a government places a sanction on the use of a language, it sends a signal to the population, this is not acceptable behavior. When it enforces it in a way that makes officials immune from the courts, it sends another message, it is acceptable to be above the law. I have to ask, without getting into the implications of dozens of changes proposed in Bill 96, what will the average Quebecer think, especially francophone Quebecers, think when they hear English spoken on the street or in a store? How will they react when they see a sign or a document in English, which is perfectly legal? They've been told in a few words, "Bill 96 is good for the French language, and it will halt creeping anglicization." Even though these single acts like speaking English on the street are perfectly legitimate, the average francophone Quebecer may feel the government's sanction or support empowers them to call out this so-called unacceptable behavior. Do changes in the law give public servants carte blanche to refuse services to Anglophones that are not historic Anglophones? The potential lies for serious social disruption when the government of all Quebecers acts solely for the majority. We've already seen this, the impact on minorities, with the advent of Bill 21. This is a serious question, and legislators have to look in the mirror and ask themselves if they want to encourage this sort of behavior and potential social upheaval. Do they want public servants harassing individuals or refusing them service because they're not so-called historic Anglophones? Do they want American, British, or Canadian tourists in stores or restaurants to be told, "Tais-toi ici, enfin français." I hope not. I'd like to now talk a bit about my own family, which is in many ways a microcosm of Quebec. Both my parents were immigrants, my father's parents were immigrants, and my father spent much of his childhood in Scotland, so he was effectively an immigrant as well. My wife's family were Polish and Russian Jews escaping the pogroms of the late 19th century. However, on my mother's side, her great-grandmother, Marie Sylvain, was a French-Canadian. My great-grand, great-great-grandmother, my mother's great-grandmother, Marie Sylvain, a French-Canadian with roots dating back to 1640. Her great-grandmother, my mother's great-grandfather at least, was the mayor of Quebec City. Mayor John Lemesure was elected mayor of Quebec in 1868 with the support of working-class francophones and spoke French fluently. When turmoil broke out on the docks of Quebec, he was called upon to read the riot act. Instead, he went among the crowd, telling jokes and convincing the people to go home because he didn't want them to be arrested. We don't hear enough stories of the great Anglophones who built this province. We only hear exploitation, domination, English bosses, maltreatment, not the great statesmen, the scientists, the doctors, the entrepreneurs who helped build the great institutions of Quebec, our universities, our schools, our hospitals, our social organizations, our charitable sector. Instead, we're branded as the best-treated minority in the world. Not only is that factually untrue, it's an insult to the blood, sweat, toil, and tears of generations of English-speaking people and those who joined us over the last three centuries. Nor do we brag enough about the next generation. One children studied French, attended French public schools in Geneva and Ottawa. They speak and write French fluently. However, neither they nor I are considered anything but mother tongue Anglophones, especially by narrow nationalists. That this has to change. Nous sommes tous les Québécois, peu importe notre langue maternelle, notre formation, notre pays d'origine. Alors, laissez-moi parler à nos constituants francophones pour deux minutes. J'ai plusieurs amis qui sont tous l'inglais francophone et qui ont une très bonne qualité de la vie. Heureusement, il n'était jamais nécessaire pour eux d'apprendre l'anglais afin de gagner leur pain. Il n'y a pas question que nous les anglophones veulent retourner à l'époque quand c'était nécessaire de parler anglais afin d'avancer au travail ou dans la société. Je suis heureux de me débrouiller dans ma langue seconde avec mes voisins au travail et dans les magasins, et que mes enfants soient parfait bilan. Mais pour ceux et celles qui veulent apprendre l'anglais, par exemple les jeunes Québécois et Québécoises, les limites aux sejps anglophones vont vous contraindre. Et comme a dit Jean-François Gardner dans la gazette en boîte de mai, l'âge de la scène ne m'a pas transformé en anglophone. Ainsi, les limites sur les droits de la personne auraient des retombées pour les francophones, pour vous les francophones. Alors, nous avons besoin de vous afin de combattre cette politique néfaste. Et on a besoin des aborcas, des professeurs, des journalistes, des hors d'assistanceurs pour les droits humains, eh oui, les politiciens, de nous appuyer contre les menaces aux droits de la personne qui sont si évidents dans le projet de loi 87. In closing, allow me to speak to my English-speaking brothers and sisters. This is a difficult time for all of us. We may feel as if our leaders at every level have abandoned us, and that some of our francophone fellow citizens do not respect us. But by engaging in a peaceful and democratic way, by using our voices and our presence, by insisting we have a right to be here, organizations like ours are standing up for you. The old tropes of les Anglais no longer apply. We are elderly, we are poor, we are middle class, we are Black, indigenous, people of color, of many faiths, recent immigrants from Asia, and others from across Europe. English is our common language, but we are Quebecers as much as anyone who can trace their lineage to the first settlers. Never forget this. When I was a broadcast reporter in the 1970s, I asked René Lévalle, who was a Quebecer, who replied, "Anyone who pays their taxes in Quebec." By the same token, we must recognize this fight is not just ours. All Quebecers have common cause, whether francophone, Anglophone, or allophone. The rights that are threatened by this bill are the rights of each one of us. So do not lose heart. I know that many of you feel your only option is to leave, and that you have a doubtful future here. But we have stayed and we have returned because Quebec is our home. We have faced many such obstacles together before, and our community has adapted, survived, and thrived. With the support and encouragement of those of good faith, we will continue to do the same for generations to come. We use every means at our disposal, the courts, demonstrations in the streets, the ballot box, and the public forum. We owe it to those who came before us to ensure our rights are We owe it to those who came before us to ensure our rights are never diminished. We will never, ever lose faith that our cause is just. Thank you, merci.
Mr. Goodell, Mr. Standis, thank you very much for your testimonies. You obviously have spent a great deal of time with the bill. I think it is worthy of note and have an exhaustive knowledge of it. Perhaps more time than most have spent looking at the words and unpacking their meaning. And I think that that really did come through in your presentation. I will note, we are quite limited on time, but we do want to get a question or two in. And I'll invite Alenny Bakapano to answer the first question.
Thank you so much, Andrew. Hope you're well. And back to the battleground, as they say. And Colin, you made such a compelling argument for the use of language and how important language is. And I do believe it's deliberate choice of certain words, obviously. You and I will agree on that. But then, if we're going to go into battle, we have to have a series of words also that are powerful, that really get our message through. And it can't be all, you know, blanket in the sense that, well, you know, this goes against the Charter, this goes, and we all know that. And I even think those who drafted the legislation know fully well what they were doing explicitly, putting in that language. And it's been a process, as Andrew and others know, it's been a process in Quebec to use language as a weapon. Okay? And that's how I feel this bill is. It's full of a certain language that is intended exactly for the reason you said, to pervert and distort the law. If you had one recommendation to make in terms of the type of language we should be using as an organization when we present before the National Assembly, maybe that's, you know, that's hard for you to narrow it down to one, obviously. But because of time, if there's one or two words, because using pervert and distorted will be misinterpreted, as you and I know, as have other recent events shown, when you use a certain language, it is taken out of context in many ways. So I'll put that question to you and hope you have an answer. And I know I'm putting you on the spot in some ways. Thank you.
I think the sort of, you know, macro framework for looking at Bill 96, you know, there's two or three things I would say without going into the brass tacks like I tried to do, is we're, you know, we're against the bills because it restructures our federation and constitution in illegitimate and fundamental ways. Secondly, the bill surgically excise the English language from Quebec. It does that in twenty-four laws that it modifies. And I guess thirdly is that we need to have a global message, is that it doesn't just take away the rights of English speakers, it takes away the rights of Francophones, Alaphones, Indigenous, and English speakers. All Quebecers can be against Bill 96. Those would be my core points.
Thank you.
And I think I'd add that those seven principles are important and that they define who we are. And we are not a threat, we're a significant part of Quebec's history that has made a huge contribution. And we are full Quebecers. I mean, you go on social media and some people doubt that, but yes. And of course, I would say that, you know, we have to get this message out in French to Francophones.
Well, that was my challenge, Andrew. How do we get it out? And this is what, you know, example of the hearings, we've had Marc Kudrybik, one of the few Francophone who have come before us to make a very compelling story also about the economic impacts, obviously, of this on the Francophones. So it is our challenge, it is our challenge, and it's a challenge in terms of every organization that comes to get some French media attention. Perhaps the election is sort of making it not possible at this point in time. But Colin, sorry, and I don't want to take up too much time, Thomas. You can cut me off.
And my apologies for speaking so long. I just wanted to add in on the notwithstanding clause, as I think it's talked about a lot, but I think as well, I just want people to understand, it's only in place for five years. Those are a long five years, but once again, the Charter always trumps the legislature. It has to be repassed and repassed, doesn't mean that's a good thing. And as well, the notwithstanding clause only affects Section Two, seven through fifteen. Two-thirds of the Canadian Charter is not affected by the notwithstanding clause. So democratic rights, mobility rights, education rights, and language rights are not affected by the notwithstanding clause. I just want people to understand, it's not a blanket getaway with anything. And I just want people to understand that. And there's jurisdictional issues in Bill 96, like trademarks, federal labor laws, and the amendment that can be challenged in court. So I just want to let people know, once again, if this does pass, and we don't want it to pass, we can still challenge it in a court of law despite the notwithstanding clause.
Thank you, Colin. Thank you, Andrew.
Always a pleasure, Alenny.
Gentlemen, thank you so much. It's been a pleasure having you with us. And I'm afraid we will end it there. To be continued on the ongoing conversation, however.
Thanks so much.
Have a wonderful day.
You too.
It's now my pleasure to introduce Pearl Eliadis. She's an award-winning human rights lawyer, educator, and as well as an associate professor at the Max Bell School of Public Policy and an adjunct professor, law faculty as well. She's also an author who has successfully led complex global human rights and governance projects for multilateral agencies, including the UN, China, Ethiopia, Nepal, Sri Lanka, Sudan, Tajikistan, and Timor-Leste. Currently Pearl serves, as mentioned, at McGill and is a full member of the Centre for Human Rights and Legal Pluralism. Once again, it is my pleasure to introduce Pearl Eliadis to testify today. Welcome, Pearl.
Thank you very much, Tom, and it's a real pleasure to be here with the Quebec Community Groups Network. Alenny, lovely to see you again as well. And I'd like to congratulate the previous panelists for their eloquent presentations. I'm going to, in the interest of time, I'm going to not talk about the things that the others have talked about, just to make sure we can move quickly through this. I want to talk about the legal consequences of the preemptive derogations from fundamental rights and freedoms in Bill 96, but I'm going to do them in a slightly different way. I want to acknowledge, as many of us do here, that the French language in North America is precarious and that there is a unique Quebec culture and that there do need to be appropriate measures taken to protect the viability of the French language. And I think most Anglophones and Alaphones of good faith will acknowledge that. But Bill 96 goes much further than is necessary to protect the French language, and it is disproportionate in the sense that it overreaches to eliminate more rights than any rational approach to protect the French language could ever justify. This overreach violates the constitutional principles of fundamental justice under Section Seven of the Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms, had of course that section not been overridden by the notwithstanding clause. I think it's also important to remember that Bill 96 is not a one-off thing. Of course, we all are aware of Bill 21 as well, but it's really one of a long string of attempts to establish a monolithic Quebec identity, starting with the Bouchard-Taylor Commission in the most recent string of events in two thousand and eight. The report that came from that two thousand and eight initiative asserted interculturalism as the dominant idea in Quebec, and it gives primacy to the rights of the French-Canadian majority. Now, one of the two leaders of the Bouchard-Taylor Commission, of course, was noted sociologist Charles Bouchard, who referred to this idea of interculturalism as, and I'm quoting, "A perfectly legitimate attempt to support the interests of the majority." When you take the idea of the interests of the majority culture as your preeminent normative structure, that changes the way you deal with others. Before Bill 96, there was Bill 21, of course, also using the notwithstanding clause. And for those who would talk about the fact that the majority of the provisions of Bill 21 being upheld does not augur well for Bill 96, they'd be right, but I would suggest to you that it's cold comfort in light of the fact that Mr. Justice Blanchard commented in the Bill 21 case, the hack decision, about the, and I'm quoting again, "serious and negative consequences for all people who wear religious symbols in public and the troubling evidence of, quote, 'an upsurge in acts of harassment or denigrating, insulting remarks against members of the Muslim faith.'" Now, I'd like to connect back to the previous speakers who talked about the potential impacts on harassment and intimidation of Anglophone communities. There are real parallels there, I think, in the two cases that we need to be aware of. So Bill 96 must be understood as part of a sustained assault, an ongoing assault on equality rights, fundamental freedoms, and human rights more generally. I'm not going to talk about the language rights and the fact that they continue to be protected despite the use of the notwithstanding clause, which I believe Colin just referred to. Commentators and experts rightly point to the social and cultural significance of the Quebec Charter. And we often talk about the fact that Quebec is very progressive and that the Quebec Charter preceded the Canadian Charter by seven years, following a unanimous vote in the National Assembly. All of that's true, but let's put it in historical context. The Quebec Charter was preceded by fifteen years by the nineteen sixty Canadian Bill of Rights. And the Ontario government enacted its Human Rights Code in nineteen sixty-two. Nova Scotia, Alberta, New Brunswick, Prince Edward Island, British Columbia, Newfoundland, as it then was, and Manitoba, all enacted their laws by nineteen seventy. So Quebec was not a leader in this regard, although its charter is of course very good and does demonstrate the progressive aspects of Quebec, but it's important to put it in context. But unlike all these other laws, including the Quebec Charter of Human Rights and Freedoms, the Canadian Charter is of course a constitutional document, which is different than a quasi-constitutional document. It's different than legislation. We need to keep that in mind. And groups, including some of those who are involved in this call, and I know I'm guilty of this as well, often minimize the Canadian Charter in order to appease nationalist and majoritarian and populist tendencies in Quebec. And I think that's a strategic mistake, because in the long term, undermining the Canadian Charter undermines all of our rights. I also want to remind people that the ongoing use of the notwithstanding clause to effectively jettison all of our fundamental freedoms and a number of other rights is increasingly becoming accepted and normalized in Quebec, and I believe this is dangerous. In this respect, it's important to remember the historic positioning, historic and historical, positioning of Section thirty-three as something that is only supposed to be relied on in exceptional circumstances. In two thousand and eighteen, a summary analysis of Section thirty-three of the Charter that was prepared for the Library of Parliament said it was supposed to be a safety valve, to be used only on rare occasions, and expected that it was only to be in relation to, and I quote, "non-controversial issues." Well, we know how that's gone. As was the case with Bill 21 and previous attempts to amend the Charter, of course, the more controversial use of the notwithstanding clause has been to systemically and systematically diminish the rights of minority groups. It's eroded the relationship between human rights and democratic processes, and it's an omnibus bill. We haven't seen a lot of those since the end of the Harper regime. But in this case, and in Quebec, the use of the omnibus bill modifying twenty-six distinct Quebec laws, including, of course, the Quebec Charter, gives rise to a certain level of complexity. And it's not always clear to me that the general public is aware of the full extent to which rights are actually affected. Colin referred to some of these earlier. I won't repeat them, but there's an important point to make here. Language rights are different. Obviously, every country has to function in a language or languages and make distinctions between those official languages and others. Decisions have to be made that necessarily discriminate against minority language rights. In that respect, there's an important difference, I think, between language rights and some of the other rights we're talking about. Where Bill 96 is especially dangerous is specifically not because it only affects language rights, it's because it affects all the other rights, right to freedom of expression, the right to peaceful assembly, the right to life, liberty, and security of the person, the right to all of your legal rights. Those rights are being removed in a discriminatory manner. That is why Bill 96 is problematic. It's not because it discriminates on the grounds of language per se, because of course, every country does that. The problem is that it discriminates against Anglophones and Alaphones to a lesser extent in the sense that they're not the ones who are mainly targeted in relation to protected rights and freedoms. That's the problem here. And of course, those freedoms include fundamental freedoms, as I said earlier, conscience, religion, thought, belief, opinion, peaceful assembly, freedom of expression, the right to be free from unreasonable search and seizure, not to be arbitrarily detained, imprisoned, or tortured, fair trial rights, the right not to be subjected to cruel and unusual treatment, the right not to be incriminated against, and all of the legal rights that the two speakers just before me mentioned are all going to be folded into the way in which fair trials are conducted with regard to anybody who has expressed themselves in a manner that goes against Bill 96. Effectively, all of those rights are now lost. So the key point here in terms of tailoring the restrictions on rights to specifically address perceived dangers to the French language are gone. There's no attempt to tailor here. Every single right that could be derogated against under Section thirty-three of the Canadian Charter has indeed been derogated against. And I would repeat what was said in the hack decision. Unfortunately, the judge did not feel that he had the ability to move forward on this issue, but issues like constitutionalism, the rule of law, the protection of minority rights, which are all unspoken written principles, unwritten principles in the secession reference that was decided in nineteen ninety-eight by the Supreme Court of Canada, have also been obviously significantly eroded. This brings me to the erosion of the Quebec Charter. People often talk about the singular importance of the Quebec Charter as one of the cornerstones of Quebec society. I know the QCGN has referred to that as well, and I think they're right to do so. But the undermining of that supposed lodestone of Quebec society is so significant and extensive, I have to ask whether the legislator is either unaware of its serious or significance, harking back to something that Alenny said a moment ago, or, in my view, more likely, in the trends in Quebec since two thousand and eight, has simply chosen to ignore this cornerstone of Quebec society. The amendment is as follows, whereas French is the only official language of Quebec and the common language of the Quebec nation and the language of integration in the Quebec nation. Now, in a stroke, the English language, its history, its legal significance has been effectively negated. It also adds, Bill 21 previously changed also the preamble to the Quebec Charter and some of the opening language. The general point I want to make here before closing with a sense of how the international law framework interacts here is that the, by taking certain selected rights and pulling them up into the, sorry, and pulling them up into the high levels of the Quebec Charter, what you're effectively doing is creating a hierarchy of rights by using the preamble of the Quebec Charter in order to change the balance of rights and the integrity of the Quebec Charter using the preambular material and the introductory sections. It's a little bit like saying every time a particular group becomes unpopular, that you're going to take the general prohibitions against, for example, the right to freedom of speech, and you say in the preamble of your constitution, "By the way, black people or Jewish people or Anglophone people do not get a right to this particular section." So it's problematic in that respect. And I want to close with the issue of the legality of derogations in international law. Canada is bound by the International Covenant on Civil and Political Rights as well as the Covenant on Economic, Social, and Cultural Rights. And under those provisions, under the International Bill of Rights, every state is required to ensure that all individuals within the territory have the rights contained in those instruments without, and I quote, "distinctions of any kind, such as race, colour, sex, language, religion, political or other opinion, etc." Now, the only possible purpose of Bill 96, and indeed its enunciated and sole purpose, is to create those very distinctions between people, not only based on language, but as I said earlier, based on the capacity of those linguistic minorities to access all the other rights that are provided by international law and by the Charter. And that really is the central point that I want to make today. That is the reason why I believe this is in violation of international law. There is no notwithstanding clause in the International Covenant on Civil and Political Rights. You can't go there. And indeed, even in cases of public emergency, and we're living one now with the pandemic, but even if there was a public emergency related to language, and I can't imagine what a public emergency related to language that would threaten the life of the nation might look like, but let's say there was one, you're actually not allowed under international law to discriminate against people on the grounds I just mentioned, including language, even in the event of a public emergency. So my closing comment here is that as soon as we lose for the Canadian course, because I fear based on hack that we are likely to lose, and even if, you know, and I very much hope I'm wrong, when it goes up to the Supreme Court of Canada and if we lose, one of the things... Uh, one of the things that can be done is simply just to go to the international community. And to ensure that in Quebec, there's ongoing respect for international human rights law, I am concerned. In the last five years that the Quebec legal community's respect for international human rights law has been significantly eroded. You might want to look at some of the positions of the Quebec Bar Association, for example, in the last few years to see whether there's been any mention of international law. In any of its positions when it has decided to take a position, and I say this. As a proud member of the Quebec Bar Association, but nonetheless, I think this is a generic problem in uh in Quebec society, so. We need to go to the international community, I would argue. Uh, that in fact, the minute the Superior Court renders a decision in this regard that we could theoretically go straight to the committee because. The the importance of exhausting your domestic remedies before going up to the international community. Uh, might be offered a shortcut by the fact that the notwithstanding clause has been used. And that indeed it's pointless actually to go before the courts to ask for those rights to be protected because the legislation specifically says you can't access those rights. So with regard to those specific rights that have been derogated from under section thirty three, I do think there's a clear path. Not only under the ICCPR, but also under the International Covenant on Economic, Social and Cultural Rights. So again, I'd like to thank uh the the uh QCGN very much for inviting me and I'm going to, as I said, uh, and early. Uh, uh, just to make sure we have a little time for discussion, thank you very much for the opportunity.
Pearl, thank you, yeah, immeasurably for the incisive uh analysis of the bill and. And particularly the implications internationally, which is something that we've uh discussed a little bit last over the last few days. Uh, I want to note that um Aleni may have to leave us a little bit early, I will not speak to her timing, but I will ask her to ask the first question.
Uh, thank you, thank you, Thomas, and I apologize, I do have to leave, it's nice to see you, Pearl, and thank you so much. For bringing the perspective of the international implications of this legislation. What I found interesting, though, is you feel that we should not wait to exhaust all legal. Uh, avenues here in Canada and and go directly perhaps or simultaneously. Okay, or parallel uh to the international level. Uh, is that what I understood from you from your presentation, I know you said a lot and I appreciate everything that you have said, but that was my uh. Because most of our, why I'm asking the question, because mo- uh, most of the legal uh speakers who came before us who have legal background. Uh, suggested that we should exhaust uh every legal avenue. And it may take years before we even have a decision, perhaps, from the Supreme Court of Canada, if I can take that example. So uh, would the same thing happen if we go into international level and would it have implications also, that's my third part of my question. If the, on the international level, they find uh cause for not using the notwithstanding clause. And then the Supreme Court decides after the fact that in fact they can use, so that we'd be in a really constitutional crisis in many ways.
So, just to clarify, I do think we need to exhaust domestic remedies, it's it's sort of, uh, you know. International law one oh one on on the domestic remedies and and those who have said that are quite right. The point I'm making, the narrow point that I'm making is is with specific regard to those provisions that have been not withstanding. Or not withstood, I'm not sure what that looks like. Uh, that that the argument would be that they actually have exhausted internal remedies because the notwithstanding clause. Makes it impossible to invoke constitutional protections provincially, you know, and of course federally under the Quebec Charter. Uh, so that the ability to do so, uh, according to the government doesn't exist. Uh, so, so I I agree that it's a bit of a risk in terms of the constitutional crisis, I'm I'm not sure that that's the case when the committee. Issues its decisions, uh, they're issued as views, not as decisions in the sense that an ordinary court would understand. Uh, and but I do think it would put moral pressure on on the government to respond. Um, and and to do something, the alternative, of course, would be to put pressure on the federal government to do a reference. Which I think would be the fastest way to get this, you know, I'm I'm guessing the Quebec government will do it. Uh, but but, you know, putting pressure on the federal government, such as it may be after September twentieth. To to uh uh seek a reference to the Supreme Court of Canada quickly. Uh, in order to get the court's views on this and then to move quickly after that, that that would be a less risky position than the one I articulated earlier, but. I think it's one that, you know, obviously requires a little bit of political goodwill, thanks for the question.
Thank you, Pearl. And I'll say goodbye to everybody for the moment, thank you.
Thank you very much, Aleni. Um, over to you, Joan.
Thanks very much, that was a really fantastic presentation. Um, and you are, I believe, the first person who has referred to international law and covenants and treaties. Before these proceedings. And I was wondering to what extent Canadian courts have relied upon international law. In reaching decisions. I, I don't remember international law being a particularly key factor. In decisions that I have seen, but I'm not a lawyer and you are.
Thanks very much for that question, Joan, it's an, it's a really important one, and there are lots of books on this topic. Uh, Canada, Canada is what they call a dualist jurisdiction like the UK and Australia and and. The US, although hopefully we're not quite as uh isolationist as the US in the sense that. We need to have domesticating legislation to incorporate, right, um, international human rights standards into into the national framework. But now, since nineteen eighty two, nineteen eighty five, on the equality rights side, we do have that legislation, right, we do have human rights legislation. That has brought those international principles uh into uh Canadian law. Now, because of the way that the interaction between international and domestic law works is if there's a direct. Um, contradiction, if you will, between uh national law and international law, an explicit one. Uh, then the prima, the the first position is that the national law will prevail before the national courts, that's, you know. Is the way of protecting the sovereignty of nations, but it does not prevent um jurisdictions and and complainants. To to send their complaints to the UN saying that this this specific legislative provision in, for example, the Canadian context. Actually violates international law to which Canada is bound, at which point the international community. Uh, would issue review, and I'll give you a very quick example, which I think is uh an important one, I'm sure, Joan, you're going to remember this, the the Lovelace case.
Yes, yes.
Okay, many years ago, uh, and for those who who have not uh studied this case. Uh, so this was an indigenous woman who complained about the fact that the operation of otherwise valid Canadian legislation was such that it stripped her. Of her indigenous, uh, of her First Nations status, okay? Um, and so. That was valid Canadian law, and she went up to the Supreme Court of Canada, she lost, so she went to the international, uh, the 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 Human Rights Committee, which is the overseeing treaty body. And she said, look, th- then here's the way Canadian law is operating, I've gone all the way to the Supreme Court, I've lost every time. Uh, I have been stripped of my, my identity as a First Nations person and discriminated against because I'm a woman. Because had I been a man and married out, I would not have lost my status, right? So, so the 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 committee said, you're right, you're right, and and this is discriminatory legislation. So, so you can have situations where you have that dialogue, if you will, between the international community and and the national community. And then the last point in terms of your question about, you know, how does it work? Uh, we, how do Canadian courts take it into consideration, there's a lot of case law on this. Um, but basically, the Canadian courts take the position that international law is used as a way to. Frame and interpret and understand the way that Canadian law should be interpreted, and there's a general principle. In human rights law that you have to use a large liberal and purpose of interpretation when um uh reading a human rights uh. Uh, human rights law, so, so it's it's not that you can sort of cite international law and say this applies here, never mind Canadian law. Uh, you have to look at the Canadian law and use international law principles to see if you can make them fit together, and if you can't. That that's when I think you have a, the possibility of a legitimate complaint or claim up to the international human rights system. It's an excellent question, it's an important one, I think it's one we need to think um more about, but in this particular case. You know, the impacts are so egregious and so obvious and so not subtle. Um, that I don't think it's going to be a question of of whether, I think it's going to be a question of of when, and of course. You know, that's why I think we need to be looking for mechanisms to accelerate this process.
Thanks very much, I don't know if you know that Sandra Lovelace ended up being named a senator. A member of the Senate of Canada, just a footnote, thanks, thanks a lot.
You're very welcome.
Uh, Pearl, conscious of your, that you only have a couple of minutes left, I do have one final question regarding, uh, looking at the, at the international. Um, side of things, it it is a question that we we raised with a a lawyer who was presenting earlier, and it is a question of, are. Are there other examples uh in other jurisdictions around the world where language has, where there's legislation where language has been used in similar ways? Um, that may serve as some kind of a model in this case.
So I'm I'm not aware of any case where there's sort of been a minority language right. In the context of a constitutional claim where those rights are partially reflected in a constitution and then not withstand it, I I I'm not aware of. You know, this is a peculiarly Canadian. Um, context, if you will, but there is one precedent that I I I looked at before I came on this call. Um, some time ago, there there was a a position taken before the UN that the minorities within minorities don't count as minorities. So, so the 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 French Canadian minority, if you will, within Canada is the minority. And and therefore, following that language, the the English language minority within Quebec, which is of course the majority in North America and in Canada. Uh, doesn't count as a real minority. Uh, this has an interesting bridge over to the question of nation, which I know exercises many of the people on the call. Uh, because the more recent position before the United Nations has been that people get to have the right to self determine. People get the right to define themselves who they are, so this is a change to the previous position I started with. People get the right to say who they are and self identify, now I know, as I said earlier, that the nation language gets people upset. Um, on the Anglophone side, but you know, we have more than six hundred First Nations in Canada. Uh, we have lots of different, you know, so I'm not, I I'm not too exercised by the use of the term nation i- in that sort of broad inclusive sense, Ethiopia, for example. Uses the term nations uh to to describe its own, you know, understanding that those nations, I'm saying that in quotes. Exist within the context of a recognized state, state and nation mean different things. Um, so I'm not, I'm not too worried about this, but but. While understanding the concerns, but but the point I'm trying to make is that I think the shift in the international opinion in the last ten to fifteen years has been. Has been that there's a greater likelihood of recognition of the ability to. Identify a distinct group of people who themselves choose to self identify and Colin talked, I think, very eloquently about. You know, language, culture, institutions, all those things that make a community or a group uh a nation, so maybe we have a nation within a nation within a nation. And that's okay, uh, but but it does have legal implications when you're talking about. Um, the the rights of of those nations, if you will, so. You know, at the end of the day, I think, I think the international community would be far more receptive. To a minority language claim despite some of its previous positions. Because of this evolving understanding of minorities and the greater recognition of of a self determination of a people. Which is the term used in in international law.
Girl, thank you so much for this wonderful presentation.
Not at all, it's a pleasure speaking with you, and thanks once again to the QCGN for their support.
Have a wonderful afternoon. I'll now introduce our final presenter for today, it's Arthur Ayers of the Regional Association of West Quebecers. The organization plays a significant role in initiatives that support the English speaking community in the Udo Way. By means of advocacy, networking, information and programs for youth, seniors and more, uh, Arthur. And uh, welcome to our hearings and please take it away.
Thank you very much, good afternoon, everyone, I'm uh probably joined in a minute or two by my executive director, Jean Nivis Chuck, I'm not sure if she's been put up as a as a panelist, I know she's on the line. I can, I'll be presenting generally, but I can, here she is, she's she's chatting, but in any event, I'll just speak with her, she's uh backing me up today as well. Uh, my uh presentation will be a quite a bit less sort of exhaustive than uh Professor Elliotis is, of course, I'm I'm. Uh, I'll I'll talk about a little bit who I am, where our sources are and the purpose of my presentation first before I go ahead, and. We, you've introduced the the, the Association of West Quebecers, again, we are, we do have an advocacy mandate, we are a community based organization that represents the English speaking. Community of Western Quebec, which has a rather large territory, spanning from in the east Saint Andre, Avlin, Papinoville roughly, all the way up to the border with Abitibi in the northwest. About the territory the size of Belgium, uh, but with, there are concentrations, as I'll speak to a little bit, of uh English speaking populations in the area. Uh, so we have an advocacy mandate, although we are not a lobbying organization, um, so part of our uh or or mandate is to sense. What the issues and concerns are of the English speaking community on issues such as this, of course. I, uh, Arthur Ayers, am the, I'm the president of the Regina, the R A W Q, I might say Rock, um, I've been so for the past five years, I'm on my third mandate as president. And um, so in that capacity, I've I've seen and spoken to issues similar to this and bilingualism when when in various media. Uh, occasions, uh, by day, I'm an immigration and refugee lawyer, I graduated from McGill University, I'm, I wasn't taught by Professor Elliotis, but. Or actually Professor Adine Lucky, although very, that was a a close call, so Professor Lucky will be in a much better position to speak eloquently about the notwithstanding clause than me, but. Uh, but I have some, I touch on it in my practice and I'll do give some comments on that later. Uh, as personally, uh, I've lived in in and outside of Quebec. Throughout my life, uh, I I've been through the English and the French language education systems. Uh, I can, I consider myself, most people consider me fluently bilingual, indeed, I practice as a lawyer in both languages in various courts. Um, I have also been an expatriate in Japan for seven years, I taught English there, so I've had experience as a as a cultural minority outside of Canada. Um, my, it's it's relevant to note as well, a bit, the identity, I suppose, of my of my executive director, Jean Nivis Chuck. Um, just quickly to comment, and I I apologize, Jean, I don't see you on the line here, but if you'd like to speak further to it after me, but just some general introductory comments. Um, she was born and raised in the United States, Jean, English speaking. Um, but I would say it's it's relevant to note that she's a recent newcomer to Quebec, as I would say. Um, in the, in the young professional type category, that is, people in their, their young adult busy life. Who are coming to Quebec and settling now, as as opposed to, for example, youth who are very, very young, you know, the children coming into the system. Or senior citizens who maybe have been established in Quebec and and are part of these so quote unquote historic Anglophones, okay, because that those concepts are at play in this, in this project. Um, but she's, she's a, joined us as executive director, and I think that's important to 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 note in the sort of demographic makeup of our association. I'll pause quickly as I see Jean on the line, if she'd like to share some other comments about, you know, introductory comments about herself.
Uh, yes, well, I think that Arthur touches on kind of the unique blend we have in the Udo Way, where we have a large historic population of of English speakers. Uh, the quote unquote historic Anglo's, but also a very large population of people that are new Canadians or in um Canadian. People that have immigrated to Canada that are more comfortable in English than they are in French. And I think that there is a concern that um they're being rushed and and stripped of some of the services or basically the time that they might need to. Um, to transition and and become more fluent in French and to adapt to uh Quebec society with the language barriers that they might face, so. That's a um, a little bit of a perspective that I I see from different parts of the community. And that's something of of is interest and concern as we do conduct outreach to all sectors of the English speaking community where we are.
Thank you very much, Jean. Uh, picking up just quickly, so either I I introduced myself a bit for the purposes of of outlining the source of the information with which we'll be uh giving you, so the. The purpose of the presentation, certainly as I I understood the request, is to give you a bit of a snapshot. Of what the concerns of the English speaking community of of Western Quebec are as we have perceived them. Uh, we're basing our uh report on mainly two community consultations that we ran, one was an in-person consultation in the in the municipality of Shawville. We also ran a virtual consultation recently uh on the line with Vice President Kevin Shar there and a number of low. Uh, local officials, we had Mike Duggan, who's a city councillor of the Ailmer sector of the city of Gatineau comment as well. Uh, we've also had some of the other elected officials uh comment, they are also constituents and and whose job it is to be concerned about the issues of this, of this particular community. Um, the, some of the, what I'm going to say is is a bit of the position of the board of directors of the association itself. Uh, and I'll also include a few personal reflections, um, me as a, as a, as a person, a citizen of the area, a professional in the area, and as also a parent. Me as a, as a person, a citizen of the area, a professional in the area, and as also a parent, because some of the dimensions affected the children coming in. And, you know, some of the comments will repeat propositions put forward while, you know, the Western community, the Western Quebec community aligns with the proposition, for example, against the notwithstanding clause. Okay. So with that in mind, that this, this is who we are and the sources of our information. We, I'll propose, I'll summarize the feedback that we have received and tell you that there are three large areas where the the concerns of the Western Quebec community are centered. And those are how it affects senior citizens. And those who are not likely, we say not likely to learn English, including historic Anglophones. Okay. Second, how it affects businesses in centers where there is a concentration of Anglophone population. And thirdly, how it affects youth with what we might be composed, we are composed of what we might call, as Madeline Lawler has, has called that the kids of Bill 101, kids of Bill 101 versus quote unquote historic Anglos. And the Sichep enrollment cap. Okay, those are the three big points of concentration. I will talk about those first, but I'll make comments a little bit on the public sector, state apparatus and francesation. Again, these are themes that have come up in this, in the consultations that we've had. And I'll finish with legal immigration and the generally sort of the political context. I'll give comments on that. So first, as I'll say, senior citizens and essential services. The reflection is rather quick and simple. We have, as Mr. Duggan pointed out, we have concentrations especially in the municipalities of Shawville, Campbell's Bay, Bristol, Fort Fort Cullentz. These are, these are communities about an hour and a half, 100 kilometers northwest of Ottawa Gatineau, up the Ottawa River of predominantly Anglophone population, as well as the what is now the Ailner Sector of the city of Gatineau. There's a significant concentration of Anglophone populations that are concerned about the erosion of essential services. Okay, and you're, we're talking about citizens who are not likely realistically practically to learn French in any sort of competent fashion. We're very concerned about the erosion of essential ID, for example, health and social services that are available to them with the implication that the state apparatus, I won't go into detail, being having to function in a exemplary French fashion. How will that translate into whether somebody who's at the emergency is able to be understood because they have a broken arm and they have to speak in English? Okay. That we, that is an essential concern. The second, with respect to commerce and and businesses, again, they're, they're centers with concentrations of Anglophone populations, for example, Shawville. Here, we're very concerned about the lowering of the threshold from 50 to 25 employees of the application of Bill 101. We had one particular comment about the, it was the general manager, the owner of the Giant Tiger store in Shawville, who was thinking, how am I going to get 25 French speaking Anglophone, French speaking employees in the business? The, it's, it's going to, I'm going to have trouble finding people and I'm going to have trouble keeping up with the administrative paperwork. That is a concern for people. And I'll get back to the, the means of the state with respect to the extrajudicial means of enforcing the law with you have warrantless searches of the computers and cell phones, which recalls the language wars of years past. And people have, we sensed very tender memories, negative tender, tender memories of those wars gone past. And there's fear that this may come again in those communities. We've, we've heard some of the comments we've had is that there is a concern that the bill is short sighted in the sense that it may lead to less investment in Quebec because of the higher language burdens. We, among the agricultural community, again, up the valley, there's a lack of support and additional burden on farmers and growers up there. I'll repeat some comments of Ms. Lawler. There, again, the law appears to be sort of punitive based as opposed to incentive based. And we, the, the business, you look at a business from her perspective, probably more likely to hire a reliably bilingual person than, for example, a quote unquote Anglophone with passable French. And which contributes to the brain drain. You have youth who are in that formative 18, 19, 20 year old pocket who may not feel, may feel, or may not have the French that's, that's up to the level of a Francophone and may be more incentivized to set up their career just outside of Quebec. Then in Quebec contributes to the weakening of the Quebec economy. That's on commerce and labor relations. Third, I'll go to youth and education. Again, the Sichep caps, I think that's significant here. Because again, we're on the border with Ontario and you have easy access to a Anglophone, but quite bilingual society just across the river. We're concerned about, some of our constituents have talked about the three limits on temporary work waivers. It makes it more difficult to attract employees and keep talent. Again, I'm repeating the, the brain drain. It could, it could impact students that may face having to enter the French school system if their waivers revolt. I bounced between the two systems and I had to do some catch up with French. The English language Sicheps in rural areas may face challenges if they're capped for the French student population because they don't have a lot of population to fill the Sicheps with to begin with. And if the population, the English speaking youth population declines, well, there's a vicious circle that involves, and you might see the closure of some Sicheps in rural areas. I've talked about the brain drain. And here, I'll share a bit of a, of a context from the perspective as a, as a parent with children in the English language education system. And the context, again, the specific context of Western Quebec is that insofar as the Western Quebec School Board and its schools are concerned, it appears that our English language school community is rather healthy, which is different than Montreal's. I understand a lot of the schools are closing. There's, there's not enough students being enrolled. In Western Quebec, in the schools that my children are signed up to, Pierre-Luc Tridoux Elementary School in Hall Gatineau and the Philomen Wright Hadley Junior High Schools here, they're rather healthy. There are lots of students. There's actually too much enrollment. The teachers and the administration are good. There's a good community synergy going, and that's different from other regions. But here you have, again, you have the, the closeness of the, you know, Ontario and the Ottawa city environment. And there is no, I feel the need to comment on the absence of truly bilingual education in the French system. You have, which forces parents such as me to make a bizarre choice between sending your children to the English schools so that they have at least a French immersion program, which approaches bilingual education. But again, it's maybe subpar French, not quite to the same degree as to be employed in Quebec. Or go into the French system, which is almost exclusively French and no English at all, which hinders their, their career choices, which was repeated by Mr. Duggan. Do you kids want to learn English? So they, they, they can, they can have more options, which again, of course, gives it brings back to Sichep. You don't have an ostensibly bilingual program in the French system and it chooses, it forces parents to choose between immersion or putting them in the French system and hoping that they pick up English. I'll say as the virus that it is, I see, I see many parents say this. They say, oh, you can just pick up English. Don't worry about it. Send them into French. French is harder. French, again, with the nationalism. French is the only language that is complicated and difficult enough to warrant formal teaching. You can just pick up English. I personally, I don't agree with that, that philosophy. And I think this may be at the root. While it wasn't repeated specifically by Ms. Lawler from Youth for East Quebec, at the root of why there is enrollment in Sicheps by Francophone students. And the English Sicheps at that age, because they're getting to that point in their career where they want to broaden their horizons and they don't want to be limited to Quebec. They want to explore their English. So that is, that is a concern in this area because you have Ottawa just across the river and there's a temptation to go across Quebec. In the local area, indeed, loses, loses people. And I'll come back to that in the professional sector there. So those are the three. Those are the three main, main areas of concern. The senior citizens, essential services, businesses affected. And youth coming into that, that point in their career where they're broadening their horizons, the cap on Sicheps is, is problematic. Okay, I'll talk a little bit about the public sector and professional orders now. And we're finding that there may be, again, with the increased cap on French language, not cap, but the standards on French language ability. We're worried about the difficulty in accessing health and social services in part because there's already a, there's already a shortage of particularly medical professionals. We, you've all heard of the unfortunate reputation of the Hall Hospital, worst in the province. They have trouble retaining professionals. McGill has opened up or is planning to open up a branch of the medical faculty here. Again, and there's the sort of English versus French, again, because we need medical professionals. If they are for, if the French is becomes an obstacle, they're likely to seek work elsewhere, contributing to the absence and the shortage of medical professionals here and the ability of the access to medical services here as well. We are also concerned, we understand the, the ability of municipalities on the bilingual status to retain it if they pass a resolution. Okay, but what if it's allowed to lapse? Right? What if it's allowed to lapse and they, and how do they get it back? Again, there's administrative paperwork if, if it is, is allowed to lapse and then they don't, they don't pass that resolution. And again, we have municipalities with, with concentrations of Anglophones like the municipality of Chelsea, which is maybe colloquially referred to as the west mount of Ottawa Gatineau. But it is considered relatively bilingual and anecdotally, I can tell you that many, many people sort of aspire to the quote unquote Chelsea lifestyle because it's, it's, it's like living in cottage country, but with the highway, we can beam down to Ottawa in 20 minutes. And so there's a rather, anyway, there's, there's a sort of a new coming population there and that municipality currently is considered bilingual. How will that status be affected? Okay. Regarding the state apparatus. A comment, many, as I spoke earlier about businesses in places such as Shawville, that are concerned about the reduction in the cap from 50 to the threshold 50 to 25 employees for the application of Bill 101. So we are therefore parallely concerned about the measures for to apply that law and i.e. with the warrant, the searches of the cell phones and computer equipment. That's very concerning and it recalls the painful memories of the language where wars fought years ago. That's a concern that we've heard from the community and we have asked, some people have asked whether not for profits will be affected. It appears that it's, it's an organization like any other, not necessarily the fact that it's not for profit will be affected. However, we understand they have a plan to begin communicating with our constituents in French after a quote reasonable period of time. What does this mean for a communicate, an association such as the West Quebecers is unknown, because they have to build the apparatus and the language policy in that regard. A few comments on the, what I'll call francesation. This is the increased access to French language education. Generally, it's quite welcome by, both by the community and the association. This is, you may know that the West Quebecers had previously given free French language education. This was missing in the province of Quebec. Before, it used to be that you would have free, the key is free here, free language courses for quote unquote immigrants. That is, people coming from outside North America or the, I guess, the Kingdom of English outside. If you came from Africa, you would get free French language courses. However, if you were English speaking and you came from the rest of Canada or the United States or Australia or the UK, you did not have free French language education. We signaled this to the government of Quebec and we were able to have grants to run free French, French second language courses. There was a great demand for them. Jean can, can correct me on the exact numbers, but we generally had somewhere between 300 and some signed up and anywhere between 1 and 200 on a waitlist at any given time. There were, there was great demand for it and very, it was very appreciated by the community, which is therefore very happy to see that the government has picked that up and responded to that and offered or purports to increase the availability of free French second language education for everybody, including people who are not necessarily quote unquote newcomers. So that's positively received. The questions remaining are exactly how it will be rolled out. How will they be administered? How soon will they be available? Who will have access? We have diverging reports on how it's applied in rural areas for farmers. On the one hand, we have reports that there, it's already taking place and they're, they're running to teach firefighters how to speak in French out in the rural areas. On the other hand, we have, we have other reports as well. And so there's, there's diverging reports there. A few. Just a few comments. I'll, I'll say one line on the legal implication. Professor Elliotis has spoken at length. I'm sure other lawyers have spoken at length about the use of the notwithstanding clause. The, the comment is that certainly the association, as you see from our public statement and those in the community who know enough to know are definitely aligned with opposing the use of the systematic use of the notwithstanding clause and in some cases closure, which aligns with the general stance against minorities. I can speak at length of that as a practicing lawyer in a second here, but that generally stymies. I see the litigation process as the other half of the democratic process. If you take the effective teeth out of the ability to litigate, you're, you're cutting your democratic rights in half. And that, especially to the extent that it's systematic and repeated, is extremely worrying. So in fact, I would, I would say as a lawyer, if only they had not applied the notwithstanding clause, the excesses could be balanced out in the courts over the course of the years. I'm particularly disturbed by the language, the rhetoric from the legal government. Am I still there? The legal government that, you know, the Law 101 over the course of the years has been, I have to translate punctured by the, by the courts. That's very disturbing in the sense that it's not attacking the decision of a particular judge, which I do as, for a living all day long. But you're attacking the institution itself, which is just as fundamental. Your magistrate is just as fundamental as your legislature. And that's disturbing as, as a lawyer. And those that, that pick up on that are, I think, correct to be very concerned about the use of the notwithstanding clause. We are definitely on line with this.
Mr. Ayers, if I could ask you to come to concluding remarks, we would also like to have a chance to ask some questions before.
Certainly. Okay, I'll go again, immigration and timing and political strategy, which I'm coming to. There are, let's see here. Repeating what Mr. Shar has said in one of our consultations, it appears that the, the bill is aimed at immigrants, at newcomers to Quebec and then how to integrate them in any sphere of society. And so we're pushing the concept of the, again, the, on the one hand, the, the historic Anglophone versus the newcomer and all of this is being pushed. I should offer some comments from my, I have to offer them anecdotally as my, as my perspective as a practicing lawyer in the region. Through our consultations, although, as, as at the West, at West Quebecers, although our outreach was general, aimed at everybody. We didn't necessarily target newcomers to the region, i.e. non and non foreign, foreign migrants, but we didn't have any input. And that, on the one hand, is a bit of a weakness of our, of our information gathering, but it's telling in a sense that we didn't, we weren't able to reach them. And it's maybe relevant for me to add with the caveat that it's anecdotal in my experience as an immigration and refugee lawyer in the city of Ottawa. That the gist is that most of the, even the French speaking refugees that I help tend to gravitate to Ottawa as opposed to Gatineau. And that without asking specifically, the, the reason is generally the increased administrative burden of living in Quebec. And the data there is just that 95% of the refugees in Canada go through Toronto and Montreal. Not even, we would think, you might think Vancouver has a third, maybe. No, not even 5%. They go through Toronto and Montreal. And Ottawa finds itself in the middle of that. In Ottawa, there are many, many Haitian claimants, lots of people from Haiti. The vast majority of which, again, they live in Ottawa. They're Francophone, they live in Ottawa. And they don't necessarily say why, but generally, they pick Ottawa. The other large contingent is from Nigeria. They're predominantly Anglophone. Again, they live in Ottawa. But it's, again, they, they generally gravitate towards Ottawa, which contributes to the, the lower population, whatnot. Noting that, to the extent that they're refugees, the pertinence of their coming into Canada is humanitarian and based on whether they're in danger and not the immigration type justification, which is economic muscle, you know, or looking for language and skill. So, but for, for what it's, it's, it's worth, they, they tend to gravitate towards Ottawa. Lastly, on terms of migration, yeah, no, in terms of migration. A comment on the, that, and I'll get into the timing and political strategy lastly, in a couple of minutes. The, it's worthwhile also to identify, as I, as I spoke with respect to Jean earlier. There are different types of migrants. There are people who are coming from overseas who already speak French or who don't speak French yet. There's the U. There's the youth, there's the his, quote unquote, historic Anglophone population. There's also the, what I'll call the young professional population. Um, I went to Japan, I learned Japanese, I was already bilingual. I had a, a talent for language that was fine, but I went and I was single, I was twenty-five and I was immersed, so it was easy for me. It may not be so easy for somebody who's thirty, forty, has one or two children, a mortgage, they're professionals, they're busy. Again, as Jean mentioned, the pressure is there to learn it quickly. Uh, I, we're all for, I've always repeated, you know, in many positions that the, the rock supports, the idea of learning, you know, making a, a commitment to learning French. Uh, if you move to Quebec, however, uh, that must be tempered with the practicality of what that may involve. Depending on where you are in that phase of your life. And if you're in that busy professional phase, as I am now, uh, it's, it's not so easy to learn, to learn the language to a, to a sufficient degree of competency. So that, though, to the extent that the bill except, um, pressures those to, to learn it, it's, it's, again, it squeezes that majority. And gives an incentive to live outside of Quebec rather than it. Which leads me to my closing, um, remarks in terms of polit, timing and political strategy. Uh, many of our politicians and, and community members have, have sort of repeated the why now? Why is this happening now as, as we're recou, either recovering from a pandemic or in the lull of one of the waves? Um, we can speculate that it may be sort of taking advantage of people being distracted. Um, the, it's Quebec QCGN has repeated, we are, are certainly aware that much of the population, less so the Anglophones. But particularly Francophone population don't really know what's going on. Uh, which facilitates, again, with, and it's complex, which also, all of which facilitate the us versus them type mentality, which we, we sense. And I can tell you on the ground, I sense it. Uh, people say, well, what, it's, it's a law that promotes French, right? Okay, so if you're against it, you must be against French, which we know is not, is not true, it's much more complex than that. And so there's an insidious effect that it's, it's divisive. Uh, which many, many of our community members and elected officials have said, and I, I think that's, that's true. Uh, again, to repeat Miss Lawler, the, the law is, is designed as a bit, as a punitive way. There are penalties if you don't comply as opposed to incentive based, there's positive, there's bonuses, there's benefits to learning French. Um, and lastly, I'm, 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 the, the, the timing again is coinciding with, with, you know. It's not long after Bill twenty-one, the use of the notwithstanding clause there. I will come out and say it, um, you know, picking up on Professor Aliadis's comments, there is a. Can call it a creeping and increasing presence of what you might call a xenophobic nationalism. With the Quebecois nation as the nation that's most importantly, predominantly Francophone one. Um, the, the other Anglo, the, the other, you know, again, the historic Anglophones. Um, when you combine a national identity with some, to some degree scapegoating. Again, under, underneath it, it's acts that immigrants or, you know, there's the, uh, English is, is sort of creeping in on French. But you combine it with authoritarian measures, which as a lawyer, I can say, uh, the notwithstanding clause and closure are. Uh, you have what, by most definitions, what is considered fascism. And so that's controversial, I'm saying it, but it's, the comments have been repeated, I think, by the, some of the lawyers arguing against Bill twenty-one. The, we're not, no, we're not, uh, we're not Nazi Germany, but we've taken a step in that direction. Um, if you're two minutes late, you're not on time. You've taken a step in that direction and the continued use is, is very concerning, so particularly with the, uh, the concern. And so, uh, with those, with that in mind, I leave the floor open for questions.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Ayers, um, the, uh, in, well, it is, it is down to Joan, Joan and myself. So I'm going to invite Joan Fraser to ask the first question.
Thanks very much. Uh, I'm going to turn to your expertise in the field of immigration. The bill says that after six months, immigrants can no longer get public service in a language other than French. The official and common language. Is six months enough for somebody to learn how to survive when seeking public service?
I can't answer that as, as a lawyer, uh, but as a person learning the language, I would definitely say no. Six months is, uh, is, is awfully short, you can become functional, uh, in six months. And again, it depends on the phase at which you are in your life. And, uh, we tend to think, uh, again, just anecdotally, from the experience of the, the clientele that I have. Most arrive with, they're, they're at that busy professional young adult, I have young children phase. Um, and if they don't already speak it, I, I don't, I don't think it's realistic and as adults to learn that, to learn it in six months. And then it's also ambiguous, again, from a lawyer's perspective, what, what's the, what's the, the threshold? Right, how?
Yeah, I think from many people's perspective, uh, as Arthur pointed out, it's, it's a matter of time and a, an ability to invest into language learning. But there might be a ability to function, but is there an ability to function at the level where you receive services? And are actually able to speak? Um, I, I've invested quite a bit of time in my language process and I have seen many people in the Utaway do the same. And I imagine it's the same across Quebec. And it's, you know, you give children eleven years to get their French, uh, their French, full of French education. You don't consider them having been taught in French after six months. Um, and you wouldn't expect them to be able to speak to lawyers or doctors, they're given eleven years to, to be fully French. Certainly you don't need that bilingual or that, that level to function. But I certainly think that six, and, and this has been repeated from people when I do talk to them about, okay, the prospect of French language learning. And what's going to be available after Bill, if Bill ninety-six is passed. And it is a concern, six months, it seems like a very short time. Uh, are they able to retake the class if it's not, uh, something that they've mastered at the beginning? And how do you go from nothing to not even having support in your home where you've never spoken French before? It's not like, um, everybody has a, a spouse or a, a community of French speakers that can help them translate and make the language barrier. Uh, I certainly have that support and that helped a lot, you know, when I had questions, I could go to other resources, not everybody has that. And that makes it harder and, and slower to do it. So I think six months is arbitrary, it, it's a good start for what you'll need in terms of resources. But investing in language learning for adults and even for children, you know, they might be less hesitant to start speaking right away. But six months is not sufficient. And I think that, um, even the francisation program that is offered to immigrants, you're allowed to have three, uh, courses. If you don't fail any of them, and those courses are all twelve weeks long, so that covers longer than six months. And I don't think that, uh, the same, or that it should be different or considered easier for English speakers.
Okay, thanks very much.
I see a comment too from some of the, uh, audience here that the courses apparently aren't necessarily tailored for life integration. It can be a bit theoretical and, you know, verb conjugation as opposed to basic skills.
It's a lifelong process, I think, of, of second language learning and, and a continual process. Six months might launch you in a good direction, but your technical things take a long time to master. And those words are, are incre, you know, the more you expose yourself to French culture and the rest of Quebec. The more you're going to be using things, uh, mechanical terms that you're not going to learn necessarily, you know. Going to the doctor, uh, going to some basic ones you will, others will take much longer to, to master. And that will be the key to staying in Quebec and making it your home and finding that you work and function well. And finding the easier path of, of leaving Quebec.
Thank you very much for those responses, there, there's a related question in, in the chat that I'll, I'll bring to your attention as well. Uh, either, please feel free to ask her. Um, as an English speaker, how are we to prove that we are historically English in order to receive services? Um, which of course does speak to say eligibility certificate, um, kind of territory, though not necessarily those certificates.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll start by repeating, uh, so Kevin Shar's comments, we, we have no idea. I, um, I can say that I was considered a historic Anglophone. Because I happen to have, uh, lived in Calgary, Alberta when I was in, at, at the age of elementary school and I took my elementary school in English. And that falls under one of the categories by which I can, I can have my children educated in English if I so wish. Uh, you might say I'm a historical Anglophone, uh, you could say demographically, again, we, Kevin was, was, and I were, were going back and forth on this. But I, uh, my, my heirs, ancestors is Scottish. It comes from my great, great grandfather who, who started a blanket mill with a hamlet in, in Lechute, Quebec. Uh, you know, those, those many generations ago, uh, but for the rest married Francophones and were quite Francophone and Catholic. Am I a historic Anglo? Uh, you know, are the descendants of Philammon, right, historic Anglophones, or how far do you have to go back? It, it is, again, it's, it's a vague, it's a problematic concept because it's vague and, and it's, I, as far as we know, it's not defined. And, and the relevant.
Like a, a Band-Aid over those that have concern about the fact that they were not given, or they did not have. You know, a, an intensive enough French, uh, education. And, you know, to pacify a certain population, they're saying, oh, of course, these people's rights will be respected. Versus, um, everybody else that speaks English, just because you learn French does not mean that you forget your English. So everybody, I think it's very hard to, um, classify them versus anybody after a certain point. Or, uh, that has come from somewhere else. It, it's the, the desire to increase the bilingualism in, in Quebec is, is advert, like. Is a po, Bill ninety-six is a absolute, I, I feel, is against bilingualism and is encouraging unilingual French. Which I don't think is a, a, a course for the future, and I don't think that that's going to be feasible. So I think that you're going to see an increased level of bilingualism, which we, Rock hopes to encourage and, and wants to see among our population. We don't want more people to only speak French or to only speak English, we want them to be able to speak both, uh, to a level that they can prosper and, and. Enjoy living in Quebec.
And as I think as an, as an organization, we sort of align with it, there are two problematic mentalities that I remember repeating about Jack Jedwab and his, and his commentary. That, um, there's a, there's a misguided concern with people's mother tongue. So that works, as Jean says, if you really are what's, let's say, a historic Anglophone, a senior citizen who settled in Quebec forty years ago. That may be relevant in that case, okay, you're, you're senior first, so if you, if you protect your, your social services. But again, it's focused on immigrants, well, it, if you, if you first learned a different language than English and French, that's a problem. No, it's not, some, some of our elected officials have pointed out, the real relevance is whether you can use it in the public, uh, and, and societal sector. When you speak, I speak, we, the language of my home is Japanese, it's not English or French, I, uh, but for what it's worth. So the, the important, there's a misguided emphasis on what the mother tongue is. Uh, and as well, um, misguided conceptualization that bilingualism is actually creeping anglicization. And that's very unfortunate, uh, is, is that the, the ability of people to speak a different language than French does not necessarily hinder their ability to speak French. It's, and, and it does, there is, there is a creeping unilingual, it's, it's promoting, trying to transform Quebec into a unilingual French society. Which as Jean has said, and many others as I've said, is not, um, it, it favors more brain drain and isolation than. Then, then protection of the French language, it's negative protection of the French language.
Um, we, uh, one more question for me, we, we are well over time and, and are, are about to come to our conclusion. Um, I do want to take the opportunity, however, given that you are a regionally based group. Uh, and I, I feel I'd be remiss if I didn't ask a question to focus on the, the reality in the region. Particularly as, as the, as this bill may, um, may influence the future. Um, you know, the, this particularly looking at the, the, the language rights side of things. To, and particularly for younger generations, earlier you were talking about, um, proximity to Ontario. A lot of people from the region have moved or have considered moving or live half time in, in, around Ottawa or what have you. Um, how might this bill influence the, the, the reality particularly for younger people in the Utaway? Who, uh, and, and their desire to, to remain in the region and, and, or, or come back to it like yourself?
Well, maybe I'll, I'll, I'll start, the, I, I think the, the comments were, were reflected by, it's, it's Miss Lawler of President of Youth for Youth. I think she had said, which, which reflects my instinct as, as a person, is, is that if you've, if you've been brought up here and your French is not perfect. It's, it's, uh, you're an Anglophone that speaks relatively good French, you, your incentive, uh, would be to work outside of Quebec. Where that French is, is a professional incentive, as opposed to in Quebec where you're not quite there. And you, you're, you either feel inadequate or you, you are because you can't pass the, um, the exit exams. Or the French, the requirements, for example, for the, for the Quebec bar. It, um, that, that is, uh, that, yeah, that is, that is a concern, it contributes to the brain drain. Yeah, there's definitely a.
I also think that it's a, a major concern to our English speaking community. Because we have people that are brought up here and we're losing our youth population. That will be the next generation of English speaking leaders that will, will allow us to continue the history, you know, our historic presence in the, in the province. Or, or just celebrate their, their background in traditions. So you have the population that leaves, uh, urban or rural areas for other parts of Canada. Because their French language skills abate maybe not at the bilingual level, but are still quite, uh, useful and valued professionally. Uh, in other parts of Canada, they're going to leave and we're going to be faced with the continued critical shortage of, of, uh, professionals. In our area that we face every year. And we're going to also have rural areas that are diminished by their lack of, uh, ability to keep their population. And, and have their youth stay because they feel that there's less of a future for them. So we're going to have it twofold. Frank, uh, Francophones will also feel this impairment and, and the English speaking communities and will continue to have these critical, uh, economic issues. That are by no means new, but could be exacerbated. And we might be less appealing or less of a draw for people that want to study or improve. Or want to study from abroad, I think, um, Maddie had talked about how does this attract international students? They may not pick, uh, they may not pick Gatineau when they can pick, uh, the many universities in Ottawa. So we have a test competition that you might not face in Montreal, especially in the job market.
Uh, and the last word is to you today. Um, uh, Jean, thank you so much and thank you for joining, uh, for the presentation as well, thank you, Arthur. Um, it's been a very rewarding testimony and, and thank you very much for your time today and for joining these hearings. Uh, this does bring, you know, this does bring to a close today's hearings. And what a compelling range of voices we have heard, looking at Bill ninety-six from, from a variety of perspectives today. Our participants made it clear that Bill ninety-six is turning its back on the Quebec Charter and also heritage being at the forefront of promoting human and individual rights. We heard about the implications for all Quebecers, from members of our indigenous communities to regional considerations. And from incredible art, and the, our incredible and diverse arts community to a variety of English speaking Quebecers and communities. Uh, which have also been underscored. To, to look at a few highlights, I'd like to note that we heard legal perspectives that questioned the constitutionality of Bill ninety-six. The, the use of the notwithstanding clause and also including, uh, international legal perspectives importantly. Also importantly, we heard it is a matter of life and death for some marginalized members of our society. If they do not have proper language access to services such as health. Finally, we also heard the important message that, and asking questions about Bill ninety-six and considering what it means legally. And what it means in people's daily lives, as we're doing through these hearings, is important and should not be considered some form of disloyalty. Or in any way against, uh, the interests of, of Quebec. We will, of course, continue our dialogue tomorrow when we'll be hearing from Julius Gray, Canadian Council of Buzzed Women, and yes, to name but a few. I'd like to thank you all once again, uh, thanking our presenters, uh, from today, my fellow panelists. And of course, the QCGN, uh, for hosting these hearings. And also to all of you, uh, for, for engaging in and listening in on these important testimonies. I wish you a wonderful evening.